Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you join us for an invocation by Supervisor Gould, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
You would like, please, join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today for this great nation that you've given us, Lord. We ask for wisdom to run it, Lord. You've created this experiment in self-government, and we need your help to figure out how to do it correctly, Lord. We ask for safety upon our workers, Lord. Many of them have dangerous jobs, and we just pray that they'll come home safely today to the loving arms of their family. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen?
Will you join me for the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four three one point zero three, A three, four, and seven. Looking for a motion to call for an executive session to be held July third, two thousand and twenty-three, at nine a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with A R S thirty-eight dash four three one point zero three, A three, four, and seven, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
For that motion, do I have a second? You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Guys appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Official business to come before the Board. Discussion of pending or contemplated claims or demands. Attorney S. One.
Nothing to report to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
Nothing this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus.
Nothing.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a quad-state meeting, went over the Mojave Desert activities. B L M has a permanent instruction memorandum, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three. It's a strategic framework, an approach to identify, verify inventory, perform site investigation, cleanup, cost estimate, investigate potential responsible parties, manage follow-up on activities of the Bureau of Land Management. This P I M transmits the requirements to submit a state environmental cleanup action plan. Each calendar year, this will include abandoned mines and hazardous material management. The Desert Tortoise Strategy Plan is going to convey a vision and end goal to gain B L M and partner support, provide focus for limited resources, identify priorities for which we can solicit and direct additional funding and staffing, tell our story in a collective way, and tear down the existing recovery documents and goals. They're modeling a program designed to predict the potential outcome of using various and lethal methods to manage and protect wild horses roaming public lands. Skip through some of this. We have restoration of public lands. They got one hundred and sixty-one million. And there's twenty-one restoration landscapes across eleven western states. In Arizona, the Yanawhat is getting five point five nine million. For those who don't know, that's up in the Arizona Strip. That's the only place in Arizona that's getting any of the funds. We have the Wildlife Fire Leadership Council. They've agreed that the cohesive study was still the appropriate and solid foundation framework for change in the negative trajectory of wildlife, wildlife and fire in the nation. The goal is to evaluate what was either not identified or addressed in-depth in two thousand and fourteen framework and any challenges of implementation. Lower Colorado River Multi-Species Program. That was started in two thousand and five and extends from Lake Mead to the Mexican border along the Colorado River. Program contains thirteen conservation areas that have been developed. That's a little over eight thousand acres, twenty-seven endangered species, and five evaluation species covered. Total fifty-year project. It estimated to cost six hundred and twenty-six million dollars. As of two thousand and three, they'd already spent around four hundred million. The annual budget is around thirty-four million, with reclamation as half the cost, and the rest is picked up by Arizona, California, Nevada. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. In my update, I'll let everybody know that I attended the Arizona Department of Water Resources, came up to Kingman to hold sort of an explainer meeting on the new Walupi Valley irrigation on expansion area. That was on the seventh last Wednesday. Let's see, the seventh. Good meeting. A lot of farmers were there. A lot of real estate folks were there. And we look forward to continue working closely with the state on the groundwater issues. Three, I think we have High Ground on the line to provide us with a lobbyist report. Mr. Ponder, are you on the line?
I am. Good morning, everybody. Mr. Chair and Supervisors, thanks again for the opportunity to present to you all. The legislative session is now in adjournment for a period of up to July thirty-first. At this point in time, they anticipate coming back on July thirty-first. However, they have given themselves the opportunity to come back at any point in time with twenty-four hours' notice up to that point. The indications are, at that point in time, that they will adjourn Sine Di by August first. There's some certain deadlines that they have, that they would like to meet in in getting ninety days beyond Sine Di for the effective date of all legislation. So indications are that they'd like to be out by August first. In the meantime, there will be some meetings that will be happening in order to authorize some of the governor's appointees. And that's likely going to be it. We have been told that between now and then, there will be no new legislation that will be heard or pursued down to Capitol. Obviously, that things may change. But at this point in time, that's what we're looking at. In with respects to legislation, as you all know, in the last time that we had discussed, we discussed the budget. And the fact that the budget had passed allocating three point four million dollars to recharge basin for rattlesnake wash. Since that time, we have here at High Ground with consultation with Manager Elters and Supervisor Linganfelter, been communicating with state departments, in particular, the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, on how Mojave County could go about obtaining grants or loans for other benefit programs. In addition to that, we have obtained information from W F A that substantiates, I'm sure, what you have heard Supervisor Linganfelter discuss regarding a loan that this town of Queen Creek obtained to purchase their fourth priority river water through W F A. We have great concerns about how that transpired and the fact that it transpired at all in the sense that W F A is a state agency with state funds and river communities are in effect supporting or subsidizing the purchase of water for the benefit of Queen Creek alone. We have had conversations, and we have provided that information to the county. I know that La Paz County also has that information. And there are communications going on with the Attorney General's Office with respect to the legality of that transaction. Also, since the last meeting, we were able to meet with the governor. Supervisor Linganfelter was there. Mr. Walsh was there from the Water Program. We were also able to, although the meeting was largely procured by High Ground staff, we were able to and wanted to invite all the other river communities so that the governor and the governor's staff could see a unified approach from river communities as it relates to water transfers off the river. Coincidentally, a couple weeks after that, a report came out about groundwater levels in some of the outlying areas in the Phoenix Active Management Area. And one of the statements from Queen Creek at the time was that they were looking to obtain thirty thousand additional acre-feet of water. So this certainly elevates the conversation about Colorado River water even more. And I think that the opportunity that we had to meet with the governor to discuss the importance of river water to Mojave County was well-received. And again, the unified approach that the river communities are taking has been tremendously helpful. So during that meeting, there were also discussions and inquiries about groundwater legislation. I will say that at this point in time, I think that we are as far along as we possibly could be on groundwater stewardship area legislation, to the point where we've received significant language suggestions, recommendations. And I think that the bill that we have today is something that could be passed without amendment at all. The governor established a water policy council. Some of the allies of Mojave County are on her water policy council. And there will be a groundwater meeting happening on June twenty-seventh to discuss what the state should be doing on groundwater. And I would anticipate certainly our legislation, groundwater stewardship area legislation, being a significant talking point during those meetings. And the makeup of the committee, we have a significant number of allies there to move language forward. I think admittedly, if you've been watching the news with respect to the governor's office and the staff and relationships up there, that there have been some changes recently. We view those changes as positive and with significant opportunity that High Ground can leverage longstanding relationships with the new chief of staff to have conversations about what is prudent, both environmentally, both economically, but also, at the same time, politically, related to water, to the benefit of Mojave County. And so we continue to have these conversations weekly. I was just texting with the new chief of staff last week about getting in his office on groundwater. And in many of those meetings, obviously, we're able to bring staff from Mojave County along, but we are always making Mojave County very forward-facing in those conversations with the governor's office and the legislature. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Nick, I have a question. If you could talk a little bit about, for the Board and the audience, the Bureau of Reclamation has now, for lack of a better term, reissued, or they're going to be reissuing the supplemental environmental impact statement for lower Colorado River operations. And they reopen their comment period, or they will be reopening their comment period with comments due by August. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So we'll be working with Manager Elters and our staff to make sure that the comment letter, which we already basically have in pretty complete draft form, we'll get our comments submitted before the deadline. Is that correct? Great. Importantly, there's two subcommittees on the Water Policy Committee for the governor. One is the Rural Groundwater Subcommittee, one is the One Hundred Year Water Supply Subcommittee. On the Groundwater Committee, I'd say a majority of the folks that are on that committee are friendly towards what Mojave County and other rural counties outside of A M As are looking to achieve. Our very own Jamie Kelly from the Bullhead City Area, Mojave County Water Authority, she has been named on that Rural Groundwater Subcommittee. And she's named me as her alternate in the event that she's not able to attend a meeting or something like that. So I think recommendations are due in December, by the end of December. Is that correct, Mr. Ponder? And then they're going to try for legislative action next January.
That's correct. And I would also point out that folks that, so in the past year, a coalition has also been formed called a Rural Groundwater Stakeholder Committee that Mr. Linganfelter sits on. But we also have participation from La Paz County, Coconino County, Yavapai County. We've got not the counties themselves, but members from southeast Arizona and Cochise County. We did a presentation on legislation. Our coalition did presentation on legislation to the County Supervisors Association just a few weeks ago. Very positive feedback from Peggy Judd from Cochise County and other folks. So this is a very strong coalition that we're building, but to the point that the supervisor was making, on that Rural Groundwater Stakeholder Committee is a gentleman named Ron Doba. He is also on the groundwater, the governor's groundwater policy committee. And we have allies from the Environmental Defense Fund and the Audubon Society on that committee as well.
Well, thanks for your report and have a great week.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Nick. County Managers' Report.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. No report today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm actually going to be moving up item number sixty-five to before a call to the public. So we're going to move to item number sixty-five. We have a number of people that are signed up to speak. First being Ray Pitts. You want to come up to the podium, please? Ray Pitts? Ray Pitts, third call? Okay. Stuart Scott? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everyone. I live in Golden Valley, and we just got, this is about the rate increase. No, I just got a rate increase that was a little better. Can anybody hear me? No? I got a rate increase that was two hundred and fifty percent plus or minus. That equate, that amounts at sixty-six dollars to a hundred and seventy-one. Now, my question, what I would like, I would like to review Now, my question, what I would like, I would like to review the justification for the new rate assessment. I think people will feel comfortable if a non-government entity reviewed it as an independent party. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a possibility that I could review the white paper, the justification paper for the rate increase?
I would be happy to refer you to the County Manager's Office and our Public Works Director, those administrative folks that are responsible.
Okay.
So, and that wouldn't happen right now. You could schedule a meeting.
What would be the procedure? Just call Mr. Sam Elters?
Mr. Sam Elters is our County Manager, yes, sir.
Is that a possibility or is that just a no?
It's Reserangus.
I believe that in the backup material from our last meeting when we voted on it, is all that information that you would need and you can get that online. Is that true?
Yeah.
Chairman Lingefelter, if I can jump in. That's absolutely correct. So if you go to the May 1st, 2023 meeting, that's on the county's webpage, the portal page, and you can scroll down and you can find the meeting date and you can find the meeting date and in the backup, you'll see that information. You'll see that white paper.
Okay, one last comment is, I'm an engineer, a background in engineering, so I like the devil's in the detail. So I want to see the data.
Yes, so go to the portal page and you'll see that. Go to May 1st, 2023, you'll see that backup paperwork.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tamara and Martin? Tamara and Martin?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tamara. I live in Golden Valley and I have four small children and a farm. And we were told that the rate increase was supposed to start in June 1st and our last bill showed the rate increase on it. My bill went from $40 a month to $120 a month. And when I am on a single income family, that's extremely hard. Not only that, but I'm curious to know where the plans are for the well. Is there an end date for the surcharge that is being applied? If the well is built and there is no end date for the surcharge, who gets to pocket the money after that? Does it just go, does the surcharge end? It's pretty much what I really would like to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Tygard?
I too also live in Golden Valley. I'm trying to be self-sufficient to sustain a small farm, trying to grow my own produce. And my water bill went from $191 to $335. How can I afford to pay for this? Do I choose which of my farm animals I'm going to keep? They might be farm animals, but they are part of my flock. They are part of my family. They've brought me so much peace during times of problems and trouble. I call them my COVID flock. I started my farm due to COVID and, I mean, they help my family. I have two kids. They're teenagers and they don't love to do their farm chores all the time, but they help with our depression. They help us just, I'm not going to give my animals a lesser quality of life because I can't afford to water them. I have waterfowl, I have turkeys, I have goats, I have donkey. I just don't understand how this rate increase, I recognize that you addressed it on May 1st, I got hit with it. I got a notice in my bill that I received in May that said, "In June, the rates are going to increase." I understand a rate increase, but the $5 surcharge per 1,000 gallons for my bill to go, and we, so we get this notice that says, "In June, it's going to increase." We have two weeks to figure out what we're going to do. We don't have a pond, I'm sorry, we don't have a pool, but we go, "Okay, let's fill this pond. Let's do all these things until June 1st that we can do to try to conserve water." We're carrying 80 pounds of water to water my plants from emptying my duck ponds so that I can conserve water, so that I can continue to have fruit for my family, or lettuce for my bunnies, or things that we as humans should be able to provide for our family by being small farmers and not having to rely on going to the grocery store. It's 30 minutes for me to go to town. It's not realistic for me to spend the money to go to town all the time to go and buy these things. So I'm like, "Hey, I'll plant, I'll work really hard." Look at my hands. I work day from the sunup to the sundown and sometimes afterwards to provide for my family. And now I'm going to have a water bill that is half of my mortgage to provide. What do I choose? And then it going from, okay, let's start on June 1st. The notice says, "In June." It does not say when. So I assumed it was June 1st. From my understanding, the people that have the stand pipes or the water hall, their rates went into effect on June 1st. My bill was read from May 17th until June 16th. I didn't have a rate that was from May 17th until June 1st at a certain charge and then June 1st to June 17th. So it was imposed without notice, "Hey, you're getting this bill. Hey, just so you know, your rate's going to increase." And we've already started it. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Reserangus.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? Quick question. How much, how much did you say your bill was now?
$335.
How much of that is this $5 surcharge?
So it says that we used, the previous month, we used 28,000 gallons of water. I'm not sure how. I can tell you that I give my ducks fresh water every morning and I have eight to 12 ponds that we do. There's kitty pools.
How much per dollar, how much was it?
May I pull up my bill?
Oh, no.
Okay, so it's $5 surcharge per 1,000 gallons over 6,000. So if I use 21,000, you're going to have, quick math, 12,000 times five. Right. Thank you.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, what I do with my duck pond water is I have a little pump that I bought from Harbor Freight and I pump that out on the trees. And I'm not trying to be a smarty pants or, I just wanted to let you know that that's, rather than carrying that water.
So you'd like me to spend more money to pump?
No, I would like you to pump rather than throwing your back out.
Right.
Run the pump and pump it over.
I just have to separate it across and have to spend money to then do it.
Yeah, I fully realize that, but I just wanted to give you a hint on utilizing that water. And it's not to be critical, I'm just actually, from my heart, I'm letting you know what I do. Thank you.
Nancy White Ewen? Morning.
I am from Golden Valley also. My name is Nancy White Ewen. This rate hike for most of the people in Golden Valley is very unacceptable. It affects me, it affects my husband, it affects our garden. How are we supposed to make sure we can grow vegetables we want to eat? It saves us time to grow our own things here in Golden Valley, just have to spend the time and gas money going to a store. Most of the people in Golden Valley, what, are retired, living on fixed incomes. You are not living on a fixed income, are you? So you're not feeling what we're feeling. So I really need you to rescind this. Get the answers we need. Help us. Don't fill your pockets. I understand you probably need new parts. I understand that, but couldn't you do it at a less rate? Does it have to be this high? Rethink it. Thank you.
Sure, I can do that. Attorney Esplin, do you want to just give a brief synopsis about how the Improvement District works?
Sure. So, I mean, as best I can. Improvement Districts are special taxing districts. They're separate from Mojave County, so they have their own ability to set rates, to impose taxes. And by law, the Board of Supervisors sit as the Board of Directors of this particular Improvement District. And so the process by which they do that is they follow certain rules and procedures that they have to do and then they go forward with it. I don't know what else you want me to say about it? Any other things you want me to address or talk about?
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Esplin, does the money from this rate increase go into the County General Fund?
It does not, not at all. It stays with the district. So it stays, all those monies, the fees, any taxes, any assessments goes directly back into the district. It stays with the district. It does not at all go into the county revenues because it's not county revenue, it's district revenue. It stays with the district. Those district fees go back into the district.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the attorney.
Supervisor Bishop.
Mr. Esplin, when this district was formed, can you go into that a little bit as to how it was formed? Was it formed by the Board of Supervisors or by the people of Golden Valley? And if it was the people of Golden Valley, how did we end up in these seats as the Board of Directors?
I don't know all the history. I think other people on the board may know it better, but I can tell you just generally speaking, a district is formed by people, any people. It forms by somebody filing a petition. And so I imagine back when this was filed, somebody in the district filed a petition stating, "We would like to form this particular district to serve whatever function that the district was serving." In this case, it'd be water, the delivery of domestic water. And so that petition, generally speaking, petitions go in front of the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors then hold a hearing and then they determine whether to form the district if the requirements have been met in order to form the district. That's how we form, districts are formed today by people. People will come before this board and say, "We want to form a district." This board has approved the formation through the request of the people. So it's the people that form that particular district, come to the board, the board then approves the formation of the district. My understanding, I don't know this, I've just been told secondhand that this was formed originally, originally the people formed it and it was, it was run by people from the district. I don't know that, I can't confirm that, I don't have all the paperwork or history to be able, but that's what I was told. At some point, then that transferred over to the Board of Supervisors. That was well before my time. I have no idea when that happens or when that occurred. I could try to research the things, but my understanding is that that happened. And the law allows the board to sit as the Board of Directors. This isn't the only district that the Board of Supervisors sit as the Board of Directors. Horizon 6 is another example, very identical to Golden Valley Improvement District, where this board sits as the Board of Directors for Horizon 6. They also sit as the Board of Directors for other improvement districts, other taxing districts, like the public, the library district, the flood control district. And so you just have to look at the statute to see, okay, which districts do the Board of Supervisors sit, which ones do they do not. But currently, the way that it's created, or the way that it's functioned is, this Board of Supervisors also sits as the Board of Directors for the district. The creation of it was, I've tried to find documents and things, but it predates 1990. So, I mean, it's, we're talking over 30 years ago is when the district was originally formed. If you have additional information about the formation, I'd appreciate it.
I think the information is available on the county website under Public Works, but the funding for this district, my understanding is, GBID has a small tax on property taxes that goes to fund this plus user fees, which is what everybody gets their bill monthly. And that's how the district survives, is the people within the district pay for all the improvements, anything that needs to be done by using these fees. It's not funded by county taxpayer dollars. So I just wanted to kind of clear that up because so many people have moved into Golden Valley that are new, that have no idea of the history or where their water comes from or why there's two different water companies in Golden Valley. I think that's really helpful with the understanding of where the money comes from and it's not really county-funded, it's district-funded. It's the people funding their own water district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alan Carlisle.
I'm not much of a speech speaker, so I'm going to read it. I'm a resident of Golden Valley. My name is Alan Carlisle. Like many of the people here, I haul my own water. I just want to make the board aware of the numerous expenses that are associated with hauling our own water. We don't just go over the faucet and turn the water, okay? We have to haul it home. We have to purchase and maintain storage tanks. You either in-ground or above-ground, not cheap. When one goes bad, we got to replace it. Costs a lot of money. We have to purchase and maintain our pumps to get the water from that tank to our house. I had to replace one already this year and it wasn't cheap. We have to get a container to haul the water to our tanks. We have to have a trailer capable of hauling that much weight, not just some little trailer. We have to buy a vehicle to pull that same trailer, not some little maz to pick up. We have to have something that will haul it. In addition, we got the fuel for that. I can't speak for everybody here, mine's $80 a month. That vehicle is dedicated to pulling that water. And there's also the time it takes to obtain the water. Like I said, we just don't turn on a faucet and get our water. But these expenses, I submit that our water cost would be at least double what meter customers pay. With all those expenses, now we're going to pay more for water. So as a result, I asked the board to reconsider these increased costs, at least as it affects the water haulers. We're already paying more than we should. We're paying more than we have to. We cannot afford, we cannot pay for this water and we will not. Most of the people in here that haul their own water, they'll go to Valley Pioneer. You can get 1,000 gallons there for $5. $5. Not 11. In closing, just want to be presented an analogy if I can. Let's say you own a toilet paper company. That's kind of necessary, just like water is. So your equipment is outdated and you want to retool your factory. So you go to your consumer and you say, "You know, we need $5 surcharge for your package of toilet paper." Well, the consumer says, "Why?" Well, because we want you to pay for our new equipment so that then we can make a profit off of the money you're sending us. Whatever happened to the profit that GBID has been making all these years? Did they have office parties? I mean, did they put it into a new well? Isn't there some other avenue that we can get this money from? Maybe the well drilling company that built the last well that all the casements fell on. Shouldn't they have to pay? I'll just say one more thing, and that's the same thing as Stephanie over here said. My bill was supposed to be June 1st. That's what they told us. I got my bill yesterday. It became effective May 15th. I don't know how that happened, but $5 every 1,000 and the new rate, I don't care about, but it's six cents, but the $5 per 1,000, that was from May 15th. It didn't start, it should have started June 1st or should have been a split bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bush, Meriwether.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter and the board members. Mojave County Road Department is the largest water user of GBID. They're only, currently only paying in-district rates, even though the vast majority of their water is used out of the district. Why, and are they also being paid, charged the $5 surcharge? Water haulers in our area, if they deliver water to somebody out of district, they pay the out-of-district rate, not the in-district rate. So why isn't the road department being charged the same? I mean, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. And is their water that they use, is it being paid for through HERF funds? I'm told that there's 1.5 million in account somewhere within Mojave County government, set aside for new well for GBID. Unless it's been swept by another department, why not go ahead and drill the well? Unless it's been swept by another department, why not go ahead and drill the well now instead of five years from now? I currently deliver water free to some of the residents in my area that can't afford water. My bill this month was $375, and before the rate hike and surcharge, that same amount of water would have cost me $186. The vast majority of it is the $5 surcharge per 1,000 gallons. The new rate can't, I can't afford to continue to deliver water free to the residents who can't afford water. So I'm going to suggest to them that they get a hold of the Department of Economic Security. They fill out the form, and if qualified, the Department of Economic Security will require the county to pay for their water. It has come to my attention about Title 48 that Esplin mentioned. Nowhere in Title 48 does it say that the district can charge tax, and also the surcharge. Since the county has been charging tax on water since they took over, are they going to be required to return that tax funds back to the residents? Many of the Golden Valley customers now jump ship and are getting water from the Valley Pioneer at a rate of $5.54 per 1,000 gallons. If this continues, GBID will no longer be able to pay their bills. I spent over a week down at Checkpoint, talking to all the customers, and they said, "We're going there." They factor in the gas, the time and everything, it's still cheaper for them to go to Valley Pioneer to get water, because it's going to cost me now over $10 per 1,000 gallons. So double. I just think that the county has caused a lot of problems, not to supervisors, because the supervisors base their decision-making, their decision on what the different departments tell them what they need. I think that the supervisors need to dictate to the departments, they're letting the departments dictate to them. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Meriwether, I have one question for you. When you talk about the tax, are you referring to the state's transaction privilege tax, the TPT?
I'm talking about the tax, the tax that we pay for our water. There's no, I read Title 48, all of it. There's nowhere in it says that the taxing district can charge tax on water, and does not mention anything about a surcharge.
Attorney Esplin, is he referring to the state's transaction privilege tax, or what's he referring to? I mean, because...
I think he is. I don't know, but I don't, but my understanding, there's a transaction privilege tax, that is something from the state, that is not from the district. The state poses, it's similar to when you go into a business, and you pay, and you pay on top of that, you pay a tax, that's the transaction privilege tax that you're paying.
It's just like the, if you go buy groceries, you don't pay tax on groceries, same thing on water. One other thing, too, and, excuse me, because I'm 76 and I have a brain fart once in a while, you mentioned about how the board was taken over. When they took it over, they were supposed to, according to Title 48, to go out and ask for citizens to be elected to the board. They never did that. They automatically took over themselves, and they continued. In 2017, I think it was, the board said that they were going to go out and solicit individuals, qualified individuals, to serve on a civilian board. They never did that either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alyssa McGill.
Much like many of the people out here, I also live in Golden Valley, and I get my water through Golden Valley Improvement District. Last month, my water bill was $126. Over the past 13 months, in my bill breakdown, my water has not increased, yet this month, somehow, there is a massive increase in water usage. I had them come out this morning and check for leaks. I do not have leaks. I have not increased my water usage. My water bill this month, due to the rate increases, went from $126 every single month to $375. I am a single-income family, I have children, that is nearly my entire mortgage payment. How are we supposed to afford this? How are we supposed to stay afloat? I'm a middle-class family, I do not qualify for any benefits, because my husband makes too much money. But yet, not enough money to pay for my water and my groceries. How are we supposed to afford this? How is anybody supposed to sustain themselves? And not sink with prices like this? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jennifer Esposito.
Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District 4, county supervisor, and property owner and qualified elector in the Golden Valley Improvement District. First, I would like to say that this isn't about me. This is about the people sitting behind me, who are in the same boat as I am. As this lady said, she has livestock. I keep livestock on my property, because, well, zoning wouldn't let me keep it at the house. And we are looking forward to, hopefully, someday retiring there and moving everything there. But in the meantime, I suffered a 50% increase in my bill. As Mr. Meriwether pointed out, the major user for Golden Valley Improvement District is Mojave County. And what it appears to me is that staff has set this up, so that Mojave County Roads Department gets the lowest possible rate, and places the burden of operating the district on the backs of myself and the people sitting behind me. Now, the real problem here is that it does not look as if you've been following the state law. The state law says that you can charge fees for the operation, maintenance, and repair of the district, but those fees must be proportionate. No sane person would think it's proportionate to give yourself a discount and screw these people. Additionally, it does not say you can do a $3 million slush fund for a future capital improvement. The statutes are very clear, if you want to drill a new well, and you do have the right to do that, this is how it has to work. If the board wants to issue bonds, they must call a bond election pursuant to 48-144. If the bond wants to levy an assessment, then the board must pass a resolution of intention, 48-912, file a signed petition to incur expense, 48-915, mail out a notice of resolution, 48-916, and property owners are entitled to protest against the proposed improvement and object to the assessment, 48-917, 48-918, 48-928F, and 48-982. Now, it is very clear to me that none of this was done legally for the well that you're in current litigation with, that you stiffed the driller for on two invoices, per the entire account that I read at the courthouse. That tells me that wells 3 and 4 were probably not done legally either, which tells me that for three capital improvements in a row, you have denied these people and myself due process of law. I take that very seriously. Due process is enshrined in the state constitution and the United States Constitution, and you took an oath to uphold those constitutions. So what you need to do is rescind this resolution. Now, Supervisor Bishop is incorrect in stating that we pay property tax. I can assure you, we do not. This district, and I probably know more about it than any of you sitting up here at this point, this district does not charge property tax, it runs strictly off of fees, and you blew through the money by irresponsible staff in 2021, and in 2022, you allocated $1.5 million for a well, and 5 million of that was existing funds. I don't even think you can spend the 500,000 of that on the existing project, but you can certainly spend the million in ARPA funds. And I asked you twice now to account for that $1.5 million. You need to do that. You owe these people that responsibility. If you spend the $1 million, and you put an arsenic filter on well number 4 and bring it back online, or you, that's a repair, and you can do that. You can even spend the 500,000 on that. But you have no statutory authorization to do a new future capital improvement, create a slush fund, and charge disproportionate fees. And I'd like to address very quickly the sales tax issue. As an independent taxing district, Mr. Meriwether is right, there is no authorization to charge a sales tax. It is not the county selling water, it is the district, an independent political subdivision, selling that water. And so I can find no authorization either, and we have a court hearing on the 23rd, on Friday, at 8:00 AM in room 201, and we will decide those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman.
Supervisor Angus.
Question. This has come up a couple of times so far. Is it true that the Roads Department, they get a discounted rate and don't have to pay the extra surcharge?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Angus, I have not heard that before. I will look into it. That's my answer. I'm not...
Maybe our Public Works Director knows the answer.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Angus, members of the board. The Mojave County Road, speaking right into the mic, the Mojave County Road Division, when they purchase water inside GBID district, from GBID standpoint, pipes, they are charged the in-district rate, which does include the $5 well surcharge. That water is generally used on the application of road maintenance within the Golden Valley Improvement District. When we have to do road maintenance further east, in the Golden Valley area, we buy our water from Valley Pioneer, we buy it from the closest source to where we're maintaining the roadways.
Okay, so that was incorrect, what was stated. You do pay in district, and you pay the surcharge.
That's correct. The surcharge is on in-district and out-of-district rates, stamp pipe rates, meter rates.
Thank you. Okay, Logan Marsh.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm also here to speak on water. Like, I live in Golden Valley, and this rate increment, I can absolutely understand the need to increase a rate, but my water bill averages about $390 a month. I own a one-acre parcel of farm and land, and that does nothing but grow fruits and vegetables. Then I have horses and other ranch animals. My bill increased from that about $380, $390 to $1,200 a month. I also am running for District 4 Supervisor. I understand the need for increased rates in today's economy, but I now pay more for water than I pay for my home mortgage. I think that's absolutely insane. I do have questions, I'd like more answers, and what's going on with the current litigation with the well? I've heard a lot of people talk today, and I've heard a lot of people that have concerns they're on fixed incomes. They live off the land, just like I do. I do everything I can to sustain myself on my land. I raise my own beef, I raise my own fruits and veggies, and it's becoming absolutely insane at the cost of water. And I really am looking forward to seeing more information on how this pans out, and getting to know exactly what we're going to do to actually either rescind this, or possibly, I mean, this needs to be modified at some point. This is absolutely insane. Not a lot of people here can afford that. I, you know, it's not definitely something that I have budgeted for, but it was nuts. I'm really looking forward to seeing what we're going to do to improve this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir? Sir? Can I get you to come back to the podium, so that you can get on the mic? Do you know if you retain water rights on your property?
I have no idea, but it's something I'm looking forward to look into.
I'm curious whether, when that district was formed, if the property owners had to surrender their water rights. If you still have water rights, then you have the ability to drill a well.
I was told when I purchased my property, I do have the ability to drill a well. When I did reach into it, I talked to Amanda Downe-Brown Drilling back in 2019, I was told my, I had it witched by two separate individuals. I was told my water is approximately between 900 and 1,200 feet, which with a pump would be, in 2019 funds, at about $140,000.
No, but...
I'm hoping that you can tell me that price is cheaper.
Yeah. I owned a couple of wells, and it's not that much, but it's still a big chunkage. You're going to have $100,000 tied up in a well.
It's still reasonable, but it's, at this point, it's a feasible option at $1,200 a month.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to address this issue? Come down to the podium and speak your name, please. Is there anybody else that would wish to address this issue, come down to the podium and state your name?
Good morning, Mr. Lingefelter. My name is Cindy. I'm from Golden Valley. I'm a small business associate. My company owns a business in Golden Valley. Our average water bill is about $5.90, $1,600 water bill. We water a few trees, you know, we have a small restaurant inside of our business. We are trying to keep our head above water. We have a $5,000 electric bill every month, or more. It came $6,400 yesterday, I paid it. It's tough in Golden Valley for a small business. Gas prices are unbelievable. I know we're not, you know, we have small convenience, small restaurant, but we also have 16 employees that depend on us. Every single one of them got a water bill. I pay them, you know, $17 an hour in Golden Valley to keep them on property. They can't afford their water bill. I let them take food home, I help them pay gas, I give them costs, they pay costs for gasoline to work there. It's tough, really tough. These kids are having a hard time, and this water bill has just socked them in the belly again. So, please help us. My home, I do have a swimming pool, I do have a fish pond, I have many animals, I have a few trees that have survived. $1,200 bucks was my water bill this month. And I make good money, don't get me wrong. I mean, I've got an amazing boss, lots of money. Mr. John Graves, as a matter of fact. I cannot, I don't know how we're going to make it, between our store, our business. People from out of state are wanting to buy us out, but now they're saying, "We're not touching that, we're not touching it." So you have a lot of people that want to stay in the valley and work. What are they going to do? You know, they can't afford it, can't afford gas to go to Kingman, Bullhead, Laughlin. You know, we need them to stay in our valley. And we do everything we can for every single one of our employees. And let me tell you, I've been in corporate America my whole life, I've made millions of dollars. I chose to stay in my 41 years in Golden Valley. And we hauled water, we paid our bonds, I mean, it was tough, making six bucks an hour at the casinos, and we paid our bond. We did not walk out on it, we did not refinance, we kicked butt, we got them paid, and we thought, "We're done." We never expected this. I know we were told, we were told that we were going to get hit with this, but holy cow, that's like unbelievable. And then I have people crying. I'm so sorry, but I just, these kids need help. And like I said, we are trying to help them. It's just tough, really tough. We really need your help. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come down to the podium and state your name? State your name, come down and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Dave Johnson. I do live in Golden Valley. I have a question for you, Mr. Repsland. You stated that when the district was formed, that somebody had to fill out a petition, and it was decided, and that people were going to run it. Then later on, you state that by law, the board has to run it. Which is it? I would like to believe that we, as members of the valley, in Golden Valley, would be better running it than having four people, five people, who don't even live in the valley, dictate to us what we should and should not pay. who don't even live in the valley dictate to us what we should and should not pay.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, you've already had your opportunity. I think there might be one more person. And then if somebody wants to call you back up, we'll certainly do that. Sir, come down and state your name.
Hi. My name is Dean Johnson. Not my brother, from another mother, maybe, but that's it. I just wanted to come down here and point out to the board. Look at the people here. Majority of these people are elderly, retired. They came to Golden Valley to retire and build a community. And they're not getting the help that they need. If you drive through Golden Valley, you'll see places that are so trashed out they can't afford the upkeep of their buildings. They're falling down. Buildings are being condemned because the roofs are falling in, the shingles are blowing off and things like that. And now with them getting hit with a necessity in life. We all need water to survive. We have to have water to survive. It's just like food. And when you're elderly, like these people here, myself, we're paying for something that years, years ago, our ancestors got for free. So, people just can't pay for these high prices. I wish everybody would reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, would you like to speak? Come down and state your name. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for taking our time. My name is Danielle Keck and I live in Golden Valley and we are also property owners there. And our bill went from around $150 a month to over 300, so it like doubled. But we are a homeschool family. We have a small farm. We have chickens. We are trying to be as self-sufficient and keep our cost as low as we can. And it's just heartbreaking that we, you know, we take on a lot of expenses too, keeping our kids at home and not sending them. I cook three meals a day for my children. You know, I constantly have the washer running. Like, we try our best, but this is actually, like, it's unsustainable. And I would also like to know how much revenue that was received from the first rate increase and how that is going to be broken down or what the costs are gonna be. I looked up right now when you said that you could go on the May 1 meeting and see the information. I looked it up, but I couldn't find anything that was on there. So, I don't know if that was where else we could find it, the white papers?
If I may jump into this, Chairman?
Attorney Esplin, go ahead.
So, I don't know if you're, if you go to the county webpage, go to...
Meetings?
Meetings. Go to meetings, Board of Supervisor meetings.
And then it says Agenda and Agenda Action. Is it in there?
May 1st Agenda. And the item number was, let me see if I can find the item number. You gotta find the item number. The item number...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So, if you just click on that, item number thirty-two, and then the backup's right there. So, it has the first page, what we call is a Board Action Form. And then behind that is the Notice of Public Hearing. And then after that is the Agenda Communication, the white page that we're talking about. So, it's right there. I can see it. It's available. It's there.
Okay, so it's there.
The other place that you want to look at, just for additional information, if you go to Mojave County, Mojave.gov, and if you go to the Public Works webpage, go to Public Works, and then you click on GVID, so Improvement Districts. And if you go to, I saw this just a few minutes ago. Let me see if I can find it. It has on the GVID webpage, it says, "Why have my water rates increased?" And the Board of Supervisors passed a rate increase from May 1. To watch the public hearing, click there. So, you can watch the public hearing. And then you can also view the rate increase presentation there. And they'll pull up a, it'll pull up a PowerPoint that you can look at. So, that can help too. Then, as far as the specifics, the nuts and bolts and things, I recommend you contact the Public Works Department and they can fill you in on, how much was it this year? How much was this year? How much revenue did you receive this year? What were the revenues for these past years and so on? They can provide that information to you. You can make a public records request asking for that information as well. And you can do it that way. But that might, hopefully that'll answer some of your questions.
Okay, yeah, because I definitely would like to see like how much revenue was just based off of this first bill and then when is the end date going to be? When are we gonna, you know, that's a very good question. And then my other concern was, I looked back at my emails on the notice that they sent us and they literally, I think, sent it out on May 26 and then you guys voted on it May 1. And it was less than seven days ago, seven business days that we had actually for that. Or am I incorrect?
Somebody want to speak to the public notice requirements?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry.
So, like, the email that I received that this was going, that this was happening was May 26.
Sure.
And then it was voted on May, or, or, I'm just, I'm confused. It was like less than seven business days that we had. And then these people, us, we all have to come up with this in less than like two weeks to figure out how we're gonna fund this increase, which...
Sure, let me get it addressed for you. Manager Elters, can you address the public notice requirements?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask Steve to step up and answer that question. He's more intimate with the...
Attorney Latoski, can you come down really quick and address this?
And I think I may have also misunderstood the question. If you look at the backup, it does show when the public notices were given. They have a Notice of Public Hearing. It has the dates when they were published, April 9, 16, 23, and April 30. So, I don't know if that answers the question, but I do know that those were, those were the publishing prior to May 1.
So, all the official public hearing notices and requirements are included in the backup documentation.
So, for this, the Notice of Public Hearing shows when they were published?
And that's in the backup for the May 1 meeting?
Yeah, on that one. But I don't know if that answers your question. I misunderstood it.
It's just like, the time that I got the email from GVID and like when it was voted on by you guys, it was less than seven business days. It was like from a Wednesday and then a Monday it was voted on. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, within two weeks." So, that was, one of my concerns too, is like, how much time are you guys gonna give us to actually get our stuff together that we can even comprehend what we're gonna be facing?
Sure, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Steve, was there an email that went out? I mean, the email would be in addition to all the public notice requirements that are in state statute, right?
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, I cannot answer specifically if staff provided an advance notice of the board meeting, consideration of the rate increase.
Okay, thank you. Are there any new people? And then I'm gonna close the comments. Sir, come on up and then state your name, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board here for representing Golden Valley. I'm also a Golden Valley citizen and my heart right now is breaking because I can see lots of faces every day when I just close my eyes and I thank God that I have another day. I see so many families struggling because of the decision that was voted on. Do appreciate you guys, though, for representing us. I would like to ask Supervisor Bishop and Supervisor Gould. It seems like through today's board meeting, come to my realization that maybe the recommendation is that Golden Valley becomes its own district. Is that correct? That's the only way to avoid these new charges?
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually thinking about making that motion that we have our staff explore picking a board of property owners in GVID and letting them run the district rather than having the board run the district.
I've got a question about that, if I could, Attorney Esplin. As I understand it, there's two routes. The folks under GVID are not stuck with this board. They can either initiate the process themselves or this board can initiate that process. Can you explain that in a nutshell?
Sure. So, looking at 481018, this is the statute. So, just to back up a little bit, the Golden Valley Improvement District is a county improvement district. And so, it says, "A county improvement district that has acquired or has constructed or owns a water system," so this is GVID, "that provides domestic water to residents," again, GVID, "may be converted to a district under this article, under the Article for Domestic Water Improvement Districts by either of the following methods. One, a Board of Supervisors by resolution may order conversion of a county improvement district into a domestic water improvement district after a public hearing and not less than 20 days' mail notice. Or, the owners of at least 50% of the property that is subject to an assessment to pay for existing improvements within a county improvement district may petition the Board of Supervisors for a finding in an order that the county improvement district be converted into a domestic water improvement district. Once that is done, it says, so you go to the next statute, pursuant to Section 481012, "The Board of Supervisors shall specify the number of members to serve on the Board of Directors of the district and shall appoint the initial members." So, you're correct. There's two different processes. One is by board resolution of this board or two, by the people, at least 50% of the property that is subject to an assessment. So, those are the two methods. If it is done, then the Board of Supervisors shall specify the number of members to serve on the Board of Directors and they shall serve as the initial members.
And if that were to be done, if, I assume that you'd have to live within the district in order to qualify to serve on the district board. Is that correct?
I assume so. I'd have to double check.
And then that independent, separate board, would they have to go out and get their own attorney or legal services? Would they have to get their own engineering services? Would they have to go procure all those things independently? Whereas right now, the district's using county attorney, county engineering staff. They'd have to go out and procure their own. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I mean, they would use the fees and things that they would do to pay for those services and stuff. I don't know if the county attorney's office is compensated for the work that we do for the board, work for the district. But I think there's some kind of fee arrangements for the staff, but that's beyond my pale. But you're correct. And you'd pay for it out of the fees associated with the district?
Supervisor Gould, did you have any other comments? No. Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, thank you for letting me go next, since the gentleman mentioned my name. So, if the residents of the GVID want to form their own district, I would not oppose that. And I didn't oppose it a couple of years ago when Stephen Robinson tried to do the same and he couldn't get the community behind him. I don't know whether it was because he was the leader of the pack at that time, if there's another competent person and members of the community that have the expertise to do this sort of management of the GVID. But if that's what the residents want, I would not be opposed to that nor would I interfere. So, go for it.
And Chairman, Supervisor Angus?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want some clarity on this. So, if that were to happen, and again, I'm not against that either, but that new board would be responsible in procuring all of the things that we do now. The engineering, the maintenance, everything. Okay, so there has to be a level of expertise on the board. That's just an aside. But it's not, it's not just, okay, we're gonna take it over and then you get to tell us what to do. Then you guys gotta do it like it's from scratch, right? From scratch. Well, yeah, I would assume.
Attorney Esplin, you had a comment?
So, thank you, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Bishop. Just to be clear, it's not creating a new district. The district will still stay the same. There's still a district. It's just, instead of having this Board of Supervisors sit as the Board of Directors of the district, it would be a district that the people, that the people there, we would initially appoint, the board, excuse me, the board would initially appoint. Then after that, there'd be elections and so on.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Esplin, if that board were to then fail, become financially insolvent, is the same process used that we use in fire districts? They come back to the Board of Supervisors and then the Board of Supervisors becomes the board once again?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, I imagine so. I'd have to double check, but I imagine would. I was just looking at one thing here. I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, shoot from the hip as best I can. It does say, there is a different statute that says "The Board of Supervisors may at any time revoke the authority of the elected Board of Directors in order to protect the residents of the district." So, I imagine it's probably a similar process to that. So, that would also be something that could happen?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Angus?
Yeah, again, I wanted clarity and I still didn't get it. So, if there's a new board and we're at, our Public Works is out of it.
Correct.
Right? So, it's not like a board that then tells our county, our Public Works Department, what's up?
Correct.
It's like starting from scratch, but all the assets, I would assume, are still with the district.
Correct. And they still are today. They're district assets and they would still continue to be the same. Although, sorry, there's all kinds of things. And again, I'm trying to do my best as I can, but it looks like there is some conversion of assets. But if the district already has those assets, I don't see any need for conversion. So, it's kind of weird how they worded in here.
And if they, if that were to happen, just down the road, academically speaking, if there was a well that went down like we had two years ago, the county wouldn't be liable for any sort of public health crisis that's created by not having water.
District?
It would be on the district and the residents of the district. I mean...
The Board of Directors that is elected, they run it. They would make the decisions. They would decide. So...
Careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
Sir, continue.
Thank you. Appreciate the commentary and the information because that really helps me feel more empowered. And I appreciate the support by the board and everybody speaking. And just to mention something, we did some math that the, at an average of 5,000 gallons per pump, there's 10,000 wells, or not 10,000 wells, there's 10,000 units being used by this water company. So, that's $5 per, that's $250,000 per month that they're making just on a low average. So, we, the people, if we choose, well, we either settle with this for the rest of our lives, $250,000 a month, or we organize together. And there's your, there's your $250,000 a month that they're worried about us going bankrupt over. So, but I would like to make a call. Everybody here right now that's here for this agenda, which is pretty much everybody here, is we need to unite and don't waste this opportunity. And Jennifer's right here. Do not leave this place without getting, she has an event. Was it this Friday coming up?
Yes, Friday, Friday morning, 8:00 AM. Superior Court, Room 201.
Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the comment period now, okay? I mean, if you guys want to have additional meetings or discussions, you guys can, but... Did everybody hear that? Friday morning, 8:00 AM, Superior Court, 201. All right, thank you, sir.
Chairman Lingefelter, can I answer your question about the incorporation of the district? Please, there's a super important issue you have to deal with before you give it to us.
I'd like to hear the answer. I'm actually gonna open it up to the board. I mean, we've gone through all of our public comment period forums. Everybody's had a chance to speak. I'm gonna open it up to the board.
How much to the million in ARPA funds?
I'm gonna open it up to the board. I'm gonna open up Item 65 to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of Supervisors, let's see, that the Board of Supervisors ask staff to come back in 30 days with a plan to choose an elect, move to an elected board for the Golden Valley Improvement District.
Second.
Motion to discuss?
We have a motion in a second and a motion to discuss. Supervisor Angus?
So, in the meantime, can we have a moratorium on that $5 surplus charge? While we figure this all out, because that might not even be part of it at the end of the day.
Rescind the resolution.
Chairman Lingefelter, if I may respond quickly.
Attorney Esplin?
So, we have to go off of what has been agendized. And that's based on the open meeting laws. We want to make sure we're complying with the open meeting laws. The discussion that we've had is related to the lawsuit. If you look at it, it says, you know, lawsuit involving the board's recent changes to the district's policies and procedures, water rates and surcharge passed on May 1, 2023. And so, I'm just, the discussion we have relates to that. So, we're allowed to do that. But to make motions a little bit beyond that, I'm not comfortable with and I recommend that we don't do that. I certainly understand Supervisor Gould's motion and I can, county staff can bring forth a plan exactly based on that 30 days from now. We don't need any direction. I get it from the direction. We can do it itself. So, I'm a little bit hesitant. hesitant to suggest that we do a motion at this time on that. Same with the surcharge, because it's not agendized to revoke that, but the next board meeting, you can put it on the agenda to do that. To do it today would be a little bit, I think it'd be a little bit premature.
Sir, saying those two motions, in your opinion, fall outside of what's posted on our agenda, they need to come as separate action items on our next agenda, this is your say?
I would recommend that you do that, just to be safe.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I want to retract my motion.
Supervisor Gould?
I'll take my second back.
And we'll make sure that it gets on the spirit of the motion, get, is on as an agenda item for the meeting in 30 days.
Thank you, Supervisor Gould. What's the pleasure of the board for Item Number 65?
Does there need to be any action on that?
Does there need to be any action? I don't believe.
I don't think so.
There is, no, okay, well, hearing no motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould? Supervisor Bishop, Johnson, excuse me.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'll get you.
Clear on 65, this is discussion, possible action, receive an update and obtain legal advice from Mojave County Attorney's Office. So we receive that in executive session?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And also, if I could be clear, after executive session, the board comes out here, and the board is welcome to discuss it in public, that's the whole idea behind it. We, the public has the, has the right to be able to go into executive session, to talk about an executive session, but then you can come out in public and talk about this item in public, and that's exactly what these people have done, they're allowed to do that.
Is that what to do with the executive session?
We talked about it.
What legal issue did we discuss today?
What the people talked about today, they talked about the lawsuit repeatedly.
I didn't hear one person, well, maybe Ms. Esposito mentioned the lawsuit, but I heard nothing about the lawsuit.
They also talked about the rates, this is information that the board needs in order to make informed decisions, that's why it's then being done in public. And if you look at the open meeting laws, it's related there too, I just have to emphasize we're trying to.
I think we have a course of action, I'm going to move to a call to the public.
Thank you.
Christopher Darty.
Christopher Darty, Mojave County Taxpayer. On June 13th, 2023, in yet another shameful first in America, President Donald J. Trump was indicted on 37 criminal counts, which if convicted would result in life imprisonment. Remember when Barack Hussein Obama boasted elections have consequences? The virus of a corporate, corrupt electoral system is spreading, voters are disenfranchised, and the fix is in. So what about election integrity? In 2020, we were told it was the most important election in our lifetime, then in 2022, we were told the same, and now if we lose in 2024, it's over. The trumpet has sounded, the clarion call rings loud, the people are alerted, and how do bureaucrats, snuggled up in their cushy jobs, respond? Crickets. Oh, they'll pay lavish lip service explaining why election reform is impossible, mail-in ballots, early voting, difficulty of hand counts, lock boxes, Maricopa County, expecting us to nod in silent assent as our republic is being systematically dismantled. Supervisors, you have the power to restore election integrity. We had a taste of it at the last board meeting, it starts here. Don't tell me your hands are tied, don't tell me it's not your job, it is your job, and if you're really passionate about saving our republic, you would make it your top priority. Do you think I enjoy screaming from this podium? Do you think I enjoy scouring the hundreds of backup pages of these agenda items while the consent of the governed, our sacred right to vote, is being trampled? You leave me no choice but to continue speaking out, I know many of you get it. I watch how you vote, although at the last meeting, Gene Bishop voted against election integrity. It's time for the rest of you to muster your courage and step up. Working together, we can restore faith in our elections, but it will require a radical overhaul, time is running out, so go before our legislators, use your influence, be relentless. I am angry, we, the people, are angry. In 2023, we cannot count on our votes being counted, we have been silenced. In the Declaration of Independence, our founders wrote that when government attempts to destroy our unalienable rights as granted by our Creator, we have the right, the duty, to throw off such government and replace it. These words were written for 2023, and while I don't know what form it will take, I do believe a second revolution is inevitable. Thank you, Chris. Kenny Works.
Kenny Works, Yucka, Arizona. I just wanted to comment after all the, all we've heard about what our, our local residents, our fellow neighbors have to go through to make it from month to month, week to week, day to day. Appliances to cost more do less under government rules. The White House in 2022 added 110 regulations to strengthen energy efficiency standards for a range of appliances. We've come a long ways since positive crankcase ventilation, seat belts, and motorcycle helmets, those were the things that really used to worry me back in my twenties. The administration touted the tightening regulations as a way to save American families at least $100 a year from energy bills, oh, so it's for our own good. The regulations accomplished air conditioners, furnaces, washing machi, oh, encompassed air conditioners, furnaces, washing machines, dryers, kitchen appliances, water heaters, light bulbs, and more. Regulations were also added to commercial and industrial equipment, as well as manufactured homes and all federal buildings. The new standards will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by an estimated 2.4 billion metric tons. Let's see, I put 80 pounds of fuel in my car, I drive it, and then I produce tons and tons of CO2, is that the way it works? And the more efficient I make my car run and make it last longer, the more tons are being produced by that 80 pounds of fuel? It sounds to me like a big con scheme. The new standards will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by an estimated 2.4 billion metric tons, the White House stated in a fact sheet. We've, we've got to deal with this, we've got 30% inflation that we have to figure out how to run a county on 30% inflation, we've got to figure out how to run our own households on 30% inflation. My Social Security COLA was 8%, so I won't be making it without at least getting a job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dave Johnson?
Good morning again, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Dave Johnson, you know that. My question is the attitude that the employees of the county, in particular, the building department, the zoning department, the water department, those supervisors and those people who, me, as a resident, come in from the county to get advice, to get some knowledge as what to do, we look upon them, they're our first line of people, to tell us what I need to do, and tell me in an accurate way of what I need to do. Instead, when I go in there with a complaint, with a question, with anything, all I get is grief, I get, you got to fill out this form, so when I turn in the request for information form, well, you got to take it to the zoning department. I go to the zoning department, oh, we don't take that form here, you got to take it to the water department. I go over to the water department, oh, we don't take those forms here, you got to go over to the next department. I never get an answer, and it just seems that no matter what department I deal with, that's the results I get, never an answer, always confusion and the answer being obfuscated. And I would like for you people to address your people, to work with and try to help the constituents and the members of the community, rather than fight and make life more miserable for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Esposito? She's gone. Mark Schmitke? Mark Schmitke? He's gone. Bless you. Armin Strange?
Morning, sir.
Morning, Chairman, Supervisors. I did an information or public record request the week before June 14. I tried to do it on my computer on the Mojave County website, I never could submit it, so I went to Supervisor Gould's office, his secretary pulled up the papers and everything, we filled it out on his computer, submitted it. So, on the 14th, I get an email from the county, this is confirming that you requested records, and unfortunately, this is not the way to do it. Wire the papers online, this is ridiculous. My tax money goes for a website, but it doesn't work, and then someone from Development Services or whoever, actually, it was from Barbara Carr, sends me an email, I have to do other paperwork, why? Can anybody answer that one? You know, if Development Services, their website doesn't work, defund and give the money to the Sheriff's Department, much better service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dean Johnson? We have a presentation this morning, recognizing and accept the 2023 Achievement Award from the National Association of Counties for the Take Me Home Program. Director McDaniel?
Morning, Chairman, Board members. Presentation today is going to be very brief, I just wanted to notify you that the Information Technology Department applied for a 2023 Achievement Award from the National Association of Counties. Prior to pandemic, the Sheriff's Office approached the IT Department and requested we develop an application called Take Me Home. For those of you that do not know what the Take Me Home Program is, it is a website where citizens can register their children, their loved ones, anyone that has special handling needs, so that search and rescue can search for them in a database and find their record that they voluntarily registered, so they, these people can be returned home. A lot of times, someone who has autism or, you know, is not functioning as a normal human, I guess we would say, and is incapable of communicating with law enforcement, or someone that's found them and is afraid to talk to them, this lets law enforcement use a phone app that we developed to do facial recognition on them, to find them in the database, so we can find their handling instructions and return them to their home. So, I have a digital copy of the achievement award, so we'll throw that up on the big screen real quick, so everybody can see this. I will work with the county manager to determine how to get this award to you in physical form and where you want it displayed. So special thanks need to go out to the sheriff himself for challenging the IT Department for developing this application, special thanks go out to Eric Advincula, who's our lead software developer and IT, he spent pretty much all of his hours developing this application for a great period of time in order to make this happen. Kind of post-pandemic, priorities were shifted around a lot, but we finally, finally got it finished, and special things go out to search and rescue at the Sheriff's Office, working with us to develop the workflows and the processes necessary that develop this tool for them.
It's a phenomenal community tool, congratulations to the Sheriff's Office, Search and Rescue, and to also our professional information technology folks, you know, bravo. Anybody have any comments for Nathan? Great job.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll be going to the consent agenda. Supervisor Bishop, would you like to pull any items off the consent agenda?
No.
Supervisor Angus?
None this morning.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Number 7, Number 30, and Number 45.
Supervisor Johnson? Thank you. I'm going to pull Item... A request to speak. Why don't you come up really quick, sir? Are you talking about during Call to the Public, correct? Okay, come on up, state your name.
My name is George Hill, and I'm a resident of Kingman here in Mojave County. I attended the meeting two weeks ago, this is in regard to the budget deficit, I just want to express my very strong objection to this attempt to do a slam dunk and make up the deficit on the backs of property owners. At the meeting, we were told, we were assured that every possible cut had been made, and that the only way to make up that shortfall was a quarter cent sales tax increase exclusively for the police and a property tax increase that would supposedly sunset, I've never known a tax to sunset in my 70 years. At some point down the road, well, I decided to take a closer look at all those line items that just could not be cut by so much as another penny, and I looked at the budget report for 2023, all seven schedules and 22 pages.
Supervisor Bishop?
I believe this is on the agenda, the budget.
The gentleman said that he was missed during Call to the Public.
Is it, I, that's what's my understanding, that's what I was speaking about.
Shouldn't he be speaking during the agenda item itself?
Item 63, they told me to put on, I, is that?
So you, so you're up, you're up on the item, okay, well, then I'll call you back up, okay?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
You're fine, that was my mistake, I apologize. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items 7, 30, and 45.
So moved.
For that motion, do I have a second? For that motion, a second for the discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item Number 7? Supervisor Gould? Those weren't pulled by the board? Only items that are, that are pulled by the board? I don't think, I don't think it's mandated that we do that, so Item Number 7, is that yours, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious, how do we, and you may have explained this to me before, how do we allocate the flood control money to the various cities inside the county?
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, Supervisor Gould, the flood control funds are distributed to the cities and the county, we've got a formula that was approved by the board back in 2013, and then was amended, I believe, about 2018, 2019, to address the alert flood warning system as well, but ultimately, what it works out to is, we collect a levy for the flood control district, a portion is paid to the special district reimbursement fee, which goes to the Treasurer's Office for the taxing and accounting of all of those funds. After that fund, then 650 is pulled out for the alert flood warning system, that's all of our sensors and those things that track the rain and floods and alert first responders as it's in real time. That then gives us the amount that's available for distribution. The county takes 20% of that to maintain the flood control district, basically the administration fee to run the department. After that, the remaining 80% is then divided among the cities based on property values. So overall, property values for the whole county is... So overall, property values for the whole county is divided between the four cities and the county, and that's split up based on those property values.
Oh, and so the county is in on that?
The county is included on that.
So that's how we account for the unincorporated property value? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I move that item seven be adopted.
Thank you, you've heard that motion, a second? Heard that motion, a second? Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 30.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our contract with Runbeck that does the mailing for the elections. I'm concerned... Yeah, that's it. If we were to go to a hand count, are we, if we approve this today, are we getting ahead of ourselves if we were to go to a hand count?
Morning. I'm Lydia, I'm the chief deputy recorder. This contract here, Runbeck, works for the, I'm sorry, the Elections Department and the Recorder's Office. They print the elections ballots, they print our ballots and mail them. I'm not sure that it would have anything to do with the hand count after they're voted.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
Move that item 30 be adopted.
Heard the...
Second.
I need to back up, sorry. I'm getting into a rush here.
Christopher Rodarte, Mojave County taxpayer, I'm opposed to item 30. As a proponent of free and fair elections, I cannot support Mojave County once again taking the knee and collaborating with Runbeck Election Services for ballot printing and mail services. As I continue to stress and frequently scream from this podium, election integrity begins with you. And if Mojave County continues on this path, the consent of the governed will be an ancient, outdated concept, replaced with whoever gets the steel in first wins. I'd like to read a portion of this contract to the audience. I'm quoting from Amendment Two, Section Two, quote, "In the event additional ballots are needed due to loss, damage, error, et cetera, the contractor, Runbeck, shall print additional ballots within batches of 250 ballots as needed by the county." And here's where the fun really kicks in. The contractor shall mail the ballots directly to the voter. I know what you're thinking, mail-in voting is the law now, Ms. Rodartes. SB 1485 says so, and we are allowed to contract with third parties, so would you please just sit down and shut up so we can get on with the people's business? First of all, why is Mojave County entrusting the administration of our most sacred right, the right to cast our vote, to a third party? Why isn't the county printing its own ballots? Why are we allowing Runbeck to mass distribute ballots like so much junk mail? Where is the fiduciary chain of custody? Is it too much trouble? Is Mojave County that lazy or indifferent, or is it something else? It's past time for you supervisors to take a stand against election systems which openly invite chicanery, theft, fraud, and the plunder of our God-given right to have our voices heard. You must honor and uphold the consent of the governed or lose our republic. It's that important. Vote no on item 30.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
Mr. Rodarte? Can you lay out your plan for the mail ballots for us?
Can I lay out the plan for mailing out ballots? This is your job. Why are we contracting with a third party to do it? Why isn't the county doing it? It's not my job to give you a plan. That's what you need to be doing. Why are you contracting to a third party? This just does not make sense to me, except that there's inviting fraud.
So who prints the ballots?
The county? Do you have printers back there? You got printer machines, you got Elections Department?
You want us to print our own ballots?
Why not? Why can't you? Is there a problem with that? What am I missing?
We don't have the equipment to print ballots, so...
You don't have printers?
You're up here criticizing us, I wanted to hear your plan. Maybe then I could...
Then get ballot printing machines. I mean, where's, put it in your budgets. You're paying these guys, why pay these guys? Pay to get your own system here. Why do we need third parties involved in this? Mailing out ballots? Printing ballots? We know what happened before with the printed ballots. Let's do it internally. What do we used to do? What did we do before we started contracting with third parties?
One of our problems is we had counties printing ballots.
And?
Didn't work. Maricopa County printed ballots this last election, didn't work.
So then make it work. Do it so it works. You know how to make it work. Earn your pay up there.
No, I just want to have some constructive criticism. If you want to criticize, then you should really have a point, give me a point on how you like to see it done.
I'd like to see you guys do it. Do it right.
You want us to print ballots?
Yes, do it right. Why not? Print paper ballots, we go in and we mark them the day of the election. How's that? I know that's antiquated.
So do you want us to mail the ballots, or can we use a mail service to do it?
Well, you know what I think about mail-in ballots, mail-out ballots. I know it's the law, I know you can do it. I don't know, you figure it out. You do it. It's your job.
You come up and criticize this, I just kind of, I want to get this laid out beforehand so that we'll know how to satisfy you.
You're being very snarky with me now.
No, I'm just being no more snarky than you are with me, ma'am.
You're being smug and you know that what needs to be done and you don't do it. So just do it.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe we have a motion and a second, correct? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it? Do have it, so ordered. Item number 45.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This seems redundant. We already have computers in the libraries, but ADWR wants to come put their own computer in the library so we can contact them. Even though it doesn't cost us anything, I think it's rather redundant. It seems like it would be easier to have ADWR answer the telephone and help people out when they had questions rather than to go to libraries across the state setting up their own special computers.
Manager Alters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gould, Jake is prepared to come up and address this. ADWR reached out to the county to facilitate working with residents as a result of the INAA designation last December, and we are just be accommodating them. But I would like Jake to get into the details a little bit more to answer your question.
Sure.
So Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, what this allows us to do is they're housing a laptop that has everything on it that needs them to connect to office hours with one of their specialists. And whereas we have public computers, they're out in the public area, we'll be able to take whoever needs to use this into one of our study rooms, and then they can freely discuss things that they would have about their property, or they would be able to use that computer in a way that wouldn't impact other patrons.
Thank you.
Chairman Lingefelter, if I may as well?
Attorney Sland?
Just, this doesn't go to the substance of whether to approve it or not, but just when we were approached with this, our office was approached with this, we wanted to make sure that there was just legal terms in place to say who owns what, who's responsible for what. And so we drafted a large part of this agreement just so that both sides understand what's going on and it doesn't cost anything and who's responsible if there's damage to the laptop and things like that, just to protect the county.
It just seems like a waste of money from the state rather than just having you do this from your home on your home computer or the telephone, smartphone that a majority of the population has. It just seems like a waste of money.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
For that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
For that motion, a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. You guys appear to have it? Do have it, so ordered. We have one public hearing. Supervisor Bishop?
Let me take a break.
We'll recess for five minutes.
We're going to reconvene in about a minute. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We've got one public hearing this morning, item number 58. I'm going to open the public hearing and I'll do three calls. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item number 58? Second call, is there anyone here to speak on item number 58?
Bingo.
And third call, anyone here to wish to speak on item number 58? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 58 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Regular agenda. Item number 59, Director Walsh.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item 59 is an item that was continued from the last meeting. This is for a rezone in the Golden Valley area. And this is rezoning to CRE 5 acre minimum to allow for agriculture camping, entertainment, and learning experiences in the Golden Valley vicinity.
Okay, great. I'll open it up to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Can you explain the learning experiences?
Chairman Ling and Felther, Supervisor Johnson. To be honest, I don't know exactly what the learning experiences will be out there. That was just what was mentioned to us in their application.
Aye.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Ling and Felther.
Supervisor Bishop.
This is in my district. I'm still a little confused as to the rezoning, but I assume that once this is approved, they can do anything that's allowable under that zoning. It doesn't have to be limited to just learning experiences and a garden. Is that correct?
Chairman Ling and Felther, Supervisor Bishop, that is correct. Any of those uses allowed under the CRE zone would be allowed.
Okay, motion to approve. I have heard no opposition.
Thank you. You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 60, Director Lotosky.
Chairman Ling and Felther, members of the board. Staff received this road maintenance petition. This is merely an acknowledgement. I request that the board acknowledge and refer it back to staff.
Pretty common. We need this. This is in my district. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number 60.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 61, Director Lotosky.
Chairman Ling and Felther, members of the board. This is a consideration for the board to allocate $993,400 from Fund 205, Highway User Revenue Fund Contingency, to the Mountain View Road Construction Project. We have to provide an advance payment to the Arizona Department of Transportation prior to ADOT advertising the Mountain View Road Construction Project. This is the last .75 miles in Fort Mojave to complete that segment and make for Mountain View Road being a continuous road. The reason why the amount is as high as it is is it does reflect an engineer's estimate as well as ADOT's estimate, which we do sense should be above the lowest bid. ADOT just needs the money on hand prior to bidding. And then if the low bid comes in under the estimate, Mojave County will see its share returned.
Thank you, Steve. Questions for Director Lotosky?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop.
Mr. Lotosky, this is quite a bit over budget and taking from contingency funds. How much contingency, can you refresh my memory, that we approved for Alamo Road just a couple meetings ago?
Yes, Chairman Ling and Felther, Supervisor Bishop. I believe the Alamo Road project was roughly $2.4 million total.
How much?
$2.4 million.
Four million?
Oh, two, 2.4.
2.4 million. Okay, so that 2.4 million plus this $993,405 total, how much is left in contingency?
Chairman Ling and Felther, Supervisor Bishop, I don't have the cash balance in front of me, but I believe we're at about $15 million in cash reserve.
And how much is the recommended amount that you like to keep in that for unforeseen emergencies?
This is a good question, Supervisor Bishop. This amount that we're presenting here has been considered in our forecast for the HIRF reserves. We'd like to be in around $10 million. And we did anticipate that this charge would leave us in a position where we're still meeting our minimum.
Okay, so if these roads keep coming in over budget, how long is that contingency going to last?
Well, Chairman Ling and Felther, Supervisor Bishop, this project, to get to your answer, to get to your question, this project was programmed a few years back before the inflation effects have taken, and the supply chain effects have taken hold. We are now working with new estimates on any projects that would come online that reflects those inflationary impacts. So I don't see a pipeline per se anymore of projects that will be grossly running over budget. We'll be anticipating those expenditures in advance of even considering a project.
Okay, I'm seeing a pattern here with projects going over budget, but not just going over budget a little bit. I mean, this is 2.4 million and 100 million, and it's got to stop. I don't think we can continue down this financial disaster.
And on this one, we were vested with a certain amount of federal funds as well. It was a limited amount, albeit, but...
Do we have any more big projects that you know are going over budget in these extreme amounts?
Actually, Chairman Ling and Felther, Supervisor Bishop, this is where staff has been extremely engaged and proactive. Yes, we have a number of federal projects still in the process, but we've kept them at the funding levels so that they don't go over budget. This was a little bit more complex, complicated project. So the engineer's estimate has steadily grown as we've come through the inflationary period. But again, if the low bid for the project comes in under the amount of money that the county has supposed with ADOT, we will get fully refunded that balance that's unused.
Okay, there's so many, so many roads in Mojave County that need help. Just to put all of our eggs in one or two roads is concerning. So that's all I have.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Move that item 61 be adopted.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. I do have one discussion point for Mr. Lotosky. To Supervisor Bishop's point, I know that we are dealing with significant inflationary pressures, but I've noticed that we've gone out with several public procurements, formal procurements. And whether we've had faulty engineering estimates, or I'm not sure what it is, but we've solicited bids and don't have enough money, so we canceled the bid. That's not a good trend to get into, as Supervisor Bishop was talking about. And we don't want to ever, in the long term, undermine our relationship, or Mojave County's relationship, with the contracting community. So I would hope that we wouldn't purposely ever do that, go into a formal bidding situation where we didn't know for sure that we had the full budget covered and a little bit of a contingency, as you see in all projects as well.
Actually, I couldn't agree with you more, Chairman Ling and Felther. And to this point, ADOT was ultra-conservative in their estimate. I actually found fault in some of the unit costs that they used for some of the high-dollar items. They're not going to budge, and that's why this figure is what it is, $993,000. But again, to that point, if things play out the way, I hope that they will, and we'll see a low bid below the engineer's estimate. We're going to get a refund for that difference.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chairman.
County Manager Elders.
If I may really quick, to your point, Supervisor Bishop's, transportation projects take time to deliver usually. If there are federal funds involved, it takes even longer. This was really unique. It started a while back. The estimates were less. We did receive federal funds. And here we are, a couple of years later, having experienced the inflation that we have. So you're seeing that in this estimate. To your point, though, it's really not a good practice to continue to go through the procurement process without having the funds secured. So we have, we have had internal discussion. Our approach and our policy are changing. What you're seeing here today is truly a part of that reflection, which is securing the funds before we go out on the street. We will be doing that for every project as we go forward. We will come to the board. We will update the estimate to the best of the engineer's ability, whether it be internal to the county or external to consultants. We'll bring in that estimate to the board, secure the funding before we go out on the street to ensure that when we do receive a responsible and responsive bid, the board can go ahead and award it. So your point is well taken, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Manager Elders. I appreciate hearing that. We have a motion in a second. Any additional conversation? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 62, Director Lotosky.
Chairman Ling and Felther, members of the board. This is another road maintenance petition in the Golden Valley area. Simply presenting it to the board to acknowledge and refer it back to staff.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 63, Director Mornian.
Good morning, Chairman Ling and Felther, members of the board. This item was continued from the June 5th meeting. I just wanted to give a quick update. The only significant item that has changed since the June 5th meeting was the annual PILT funding for the county was received early last week. We received about $200,000 more than we had put into the projected revenues for the current fiscal year. So that is the only change. I did want to just thank the supervisors. Financial Services received numerous inquiries since the last meeting. Just thank you all for your engagement. I hope we were able to provide answers to all of your questions. With that being said, you had asked us to bring a balanced FY '24 budget. The budget that is presented to you today with the deferral of the Morgue Capital Project for one year is balanced for fiscal '24. The preference would be a longer-term solution without an increase to revenues. As we discussed last meeting, there's going to be a significant deficit next fiscal year. So a longer-term solution would be preferable, would be to the benefit of the county. But that's all I will say on the matter at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Mornian. We have a number of people that are signed up to speak. I'm going to go and let them speak first, and then we'll open it up to the board. Barbara Carpenter? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Supervisors. One of the most important issues we have today is law enforcement and the lack of personnel within our law enforcement. With more and more people moving to Mojave County, this is going to become an even larger issue. I understand that one of the options for our budget is to freeze some positions in the sheriff's office. And that, of course, concerns me. I'm usually, no, I'm always against raising taxes. I don't trust our government. I'm sorry. I don't trust local. I don't trust county. I don't trust state. I don't trust federal. They waste money. Maybe not always on purpose, but it happens. In the case of our pending budget, I understand there's a very small sales tax of maybe a quarter of a penny that could be spent to fund our sheriff's office. Normally, I would say no to even that. But I understand that there is a trigger to make sure that all of that money goes directly to the sheriff's office. After hearing the people in Golden Valley today, I'm almost ashamed to say that I would vote yes for this. But I truly believe we need our sheriff's department built up. If we don't, we're not going to have anything left because we're going to have more crime than we can deal with. And those poor people won't have to worry about their water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Dimico? Welcome here, Dimico.
Thank you, Chairman. I was here on the June 5th meeting. And first of all, I'd like to thank Supervisor Ron Gould for holding against the sales tax. There were some false numbers given out for the percentages. I gave you guys all a handout right there. You were saying that the tourists pay 60% of our sales tax, which is incorrect. It's more like the citizens pay 80%. With that being said, I could go through some here. Home Depot and Kingman, citizens pay 88%. Bullhead City Swanee's 87%. Kingman Walmart 87%. Kohl's in Bullhead City 86%. Bullhead City Walmart 75%. The only couple that I could find where the tourists pay actually more were Bullhead City IHOP, where the tourists pay 76%. And Kingman In-N-Out, where the tourists pay 61%. The bulk, when you average this all out, is the citizens paying about 80%. With that being said also, first of all, the sheriffs and the courts should be your number one priority. I don't care if you're city, state, county, or federal government. Public safety is always our number one priority. So when you're doing the budget, you fund the sheriff's department and the courts first and foremost. After that, then you see what money you have left for the other programs. I'm here to represent the citizens of Bullhead City as their mayor. We are not interested in your sales tax. We are not interested in your property tax. You heard the people right here. You guys' fees, our fees for the city, everything went up 30, 40%. We're all struggling. Actually, we're excelling in Bullhead City. But anyway, these people out here, they can't go and ask their boss for a raise to get more money. In government, the first thing they always do is go ask for another tax. Well, I'm calling BS on that. I would instruct your county manager to go back, come back on July 19th with a balanced budget with the sheriff's department and the courts fully funded. On top of it, you're saying there's going to be a shortfall next year, a major shortfall, millions in shortfall. Our economic development in Bullhead City is soaring, soaring. We have hundreds and hundreds of new homes coming up. 300 just on Lakeside alone. We have a new hospital that's opening up. We have new businesses, new restaurants that are coming up. A lot of them I can't discuss, but we have many coming up. That's more tax revenue for the county through property taxes. So I also, where else was I here? Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself here. Mojave County is the fifth-largest county in the state. They're also one of the poorest counties in the state. You have to look at it. This tax isn't going to affect you guys. It's not going to affect me, but it's going to affect a good amount of our citizens. So do the hard work. You might need a two-day meeting, special meeting, to go through the budget and pick apart stuff you need to pick apart. But do the hard work. Do not tax our citizens. They do not want it. Thank you.
And come here. George Hill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm George Hill, and I'm a resident of Mojave County. I attended the meeting two weeks ago in which the taxpayers were informed that there will be 18-plus million-dollar budget deficit. And we were assured that every possible cut had been made and that the only way to make up this shortfall would be this quarter cent sales tax increase exclusively for the sheriff's department, since we're supposed to believe that absolutely nothing can be cut off of them. And then a property tax increase that would supposedly sunset, although I have never known any tax in my life, and I've been watching the political scene for more than 50-some years, from my teenage days, and I'm 70, so I've never known a tax to ever go away. Well, I decided to take a closer look at all those line items that just could not be cut by so much as another penny. And I looked at the budget report for 2023, all seven schedules, 22 pages. And I don't have an MBA. I'm not an accountant. And I've never taken a course in economics, but I do know how to budget or to balance a checkbook. I've never bounced a check in my life, and that's not by magic. That's not by chance. It's not rocket science. You just don't spend more than you take in. So the only difference between me and the folks here and you all is that your account is a lot bigger and it's filled with other people's money, ours. is that your account is a lot bigger, and it's filled with other people's money, ours. So it seems to me that there's a lot of items that could be cut. And if they really can't, then you owe us a very detailed explanation and more transparency. I went right to Schedule G, which deals with full-time employees and personnel compensation, just to pay the people, never mind the actual cost of these programs and so forth that they're supposedly taking care of. And the total for everything, which includes retirement costs, their salaries, health care, and then there's a column that just says other, other, MISC. The whole total bill is about $112,600,000. Okay? And I just, some of the big-ticket items here, the library, okay? Library district, about fifty-some employees, $3,300,000. Okay? I love books. I pay for my own. I buy my own. I don't go, I never use the library. I would think that most people don't. Somebody spoke about these, cost of these computers. Why do we have to pay for those? You got your own. I agree, okay? Surely, there's got to be something there that can be cut. And things like community punishment program, that's eighty-eight grand. Workforce development, $2,296,000. All of this stuff. I could go on, but obviously, you're gonna cut me off here. So, look, having said all that, throughout the recent COVID scamdemic, while us worker bees were having our lives turned upside down, jobs lost, businesses destroyed, health ruined, and being terrorized by masked Nazis, unlawfully denied access to the most fundamental necessities of life because we wouldn't submit to your tyranny, while that was going on, none of you and none of these employees here missed a paycheck because supposedly you were all essential and we weren't. So before you approach us for even another penny off our backs, how about you all take a twenty-five percent pay cut? Now, I don't know what you're, what you're paid.
Sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, if I could.
Sal, okay.
Can I, I'd like to ask you a question, sir. Can I just ask you a question?
Let me finish. We need salary transparency.
You've had your three minutes. I've let you go over a little bit. So we're gonna let Supervisor Angus ask you a question.
I just wanna ask you a question. How long have you lived in this county?
Long enough.
Okay, were you here between 1999 and 2019?
No, I was not. No, I'm not.
Came in the year after, to 2019, you weren't living here?
Yes.
Okay, because there was a quarter cent sales tax that sunset. So I just wanna tell you that you can now, when you talk, you can say, in my lifetime, there was at least one sales tax that sunset.
I didn't witness that. And isn't that wonderful? Now, where are we gonna spend all of that quarter cent?
But you made that a point, sir. You made that a point.
Okay, thank you for educating me on that. Still, I wanna know what you are all paid. Okay? We have a right to know that, and I haven't found that. But the entire, all the district costs here on Schedule F, page three out of twenty-two here, Schedule F, the total bill for that is over $2 million. That's for you districts, supervisors, county manager, and clerk of the board. What does the chief financial officer, what is he being paid for all his expertise? Okay? It's not rocket science.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Kenny Works.
Kenny Works, Sheehaw, Arizona. I began, I began coming to the meetings when District Five came into being. Right, at that time, we were just getting over the previous expansion of the cost of everything, inflation. We had just, we'd just gone through another bout of inflation. The board at that time gave the, gave a list of what they wanted cut to the county manager, which at that time was Mike Hendricks. And Mike Hendricks did an outstanding job of going through that and making the adjustments to the county staff that needed to be made, the county expenses and everything. He did an outstanding job. And I praised him right here at this very same spot for doing so. At that time, we had a quarter cent sales tax already in progress. And it was, it's amazing how much we were able to accomplish in the county with that quarter cent. We've got the, all the administration buildings, the jail, the new courthouse, and this building we're in right now, out of that quarter cent. It lasted about twenty years, I believe. It was a sunsetted tax. But going forward, I think that we're all paying thirty percent more for just over the last couple of years for everything, at least thirty percent, maybe forty percent in a lot of areas. And I'd like you to take that into consideration when you decide where cuts are needed to be made or not made. But quarter cent sales tax, I think, should be set aside for things such as what we've previously used them for. I think that we need to come up with full funding for the sheriff's department. And how we're gonna go about that is up to you. But that should be the number-one priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, candidate for county supervisor. As was just recently pointed out, this isn't rocket science. And I commend Supervisor Gould for going through the budget and pulling out some items like cars and things that maybe we don't need. I have several ideas that you could implement, one of which is, of course, no new spending. There's another thing that you could do that would solve your budget deficit problem. Right now, we have been foreclosing on properties that owe so much in back taxes, they're never gonna pay them. And we've been having annual deed sales. Now, if you take that annual deed sale and you hold it quarterly, you can just wholesale, get those properties back on the property tax roll. Then those people can develop those properties, increase the amount of property tax they're paying, and you will solve essentially your budget deficit. Also, I'm sure that the county probably has some used cars and other equipment that it could potentially sell off through, like, the gov.com auctions and things. I think every department needs to look at excess and surplus that could be gotten rid of. I know at one time, there was a whole parking lot full of unused vehicles. I think we need to, everybody needs to sharpen their pencils and go back and figure this out. And as far as funding the sheriff's department, I have a wonderful idea. I'm very much aware that each one of you has a department budget. Now, we're in the 21st century. We don't need to be driving to Phoenix to attend meetings when we have things like Zoom and Skype. But you have the budget so that you can, you know, fly to DC or drive back and forth to Phoenix or whatever you need to do. So I think that, given that we're in a new, modern era where we don't need to travel as much as we used to, we could all start attending these meetings by Zoom or Skype or whatever it takes. And each one of you could reallocate money from your department to sponsor a sheriff's deputy in your district. That way, we could add five new sheriff's deputies onto Sheriff Huster's payroll without actually shifting anything around at all. No new taxes. We don't need the taxes. Right now, there are people in this community who are holding yard sales just to pay, oh, I don't know, their water bill. Another thing I would like to point out is that Golden Valley Improvement District pays for 4.9 employees, if you allocate that out to man-hours, one of which is an engineer. So you're gonna reabsorb, hopefully, those five employees. I assume that goes with their pensions and their health care and all the other perks that come along with this. So I'm sure that you can shuffle those people around, fill some positions or whatever you need to do. But I cannot see, at this time, any logical reason that we need to charge more to the people than we're already charging. I think that you need to run this thing like everybody runs their household budgets and just make it work, at least for this year, and get those properties back on the tax rolls, and you'll solve your problem. It's not rocket science. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the last speaker we have. I would open it up to the board. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we were presented with a balanced budget, and we were gonna vote, as we always do, on accepting that balanced budget. And then all of this other stuff was put on us without really much preparation. And we were sort of talking about it in public, which is always a good thing. And, you know, we talked about the sales tax. We're not gonna go into it, Supervisor Gould, because it is kind of a moot point. I do wanna address something that my mayor, Mayor Diamico from Bullhead City, said. And, you know, we got this list of who's really purchasing things. Is it tourists? Is it residents? And I'm not even gonna argue with this, but I'd like to see another column that says renters. Because never spoken in any of this is our renters, who don't pay property tax, who I, who I believe use a lot of the sheriffs and the roads and stuff. And the idea for the sales tax was to spread it around somewhat equally. Then there was the property tax, which I am not for, because it always falls on the, on the backs of our property owners. And, but if we're gonna do anything like that, being that we really haven't had a workshop, we haven't spoken about it in depth with our people and with our residents, before we would even consider doing it, we should have, like, a whole workshop, just like somebody said, where we present, if we're gonna present a tax, it should be done with a package of what we're gonna cut, too. Because we can't just keep doing this on the backs of our property owners. So again, to me, if this was gonna happen, it would have to be a sales tax. I think it's criminal, or as our new word for last week from Supervisor Johnson, I think it would be reprehensible to, to heighten the property tax without a package of cuts, or at least an attempt to see exactly where we are and where we're going. I just wish that this had been done a little better, and we were given more time as a board to talk about it. So that's where I stand.
Any other discussion?
Luke, could you come back up to the podium? Since our last meeting, I've done, I've tried to educate myself, and I know that you've helped me with, with numbers and stuff. And I just wanna make sure that I have my head all the way around this. So when it comes to our current revenue structure, between sixty-three and sixty-five percent of general fund revenue is state shared revenues and other revenues, such as grants and user fees. Is that correct?
Chairman Lingefelter, that is correct.
Okay.
It's roughly sixty-four percent.
Okay. So, and that's money that the county doesn't have any control over?
That is correct.
Right. So then you go and you dial into our fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget, and you break that out into the percentages. And earlier this year, I think it was February, we asked that you guys break it out into mandated, essential, and discretionary. And I asked you about that. And you've told us that eighty-five point six percent of the general fund budget is, is expense that's mandated by the state? It's mandated services?
Yes, eighty-five percent.
Two point seven is what was deemed as essential services. And then eleven point seven percent was deemed as discretionary. And then it was also noted that of those eleven point seven percent of discretionary expenses, that many of those programs and services are paid for by grants and other things like that, and not necessarily just property taxes. Is that correct?
Of the essential service, or discretionary services that are general-funded, Chairman Lingefelter, the point there is that a lot of those are split-funded, so they do have a grant component. Part of it is paid out of the general fund. Part of it is paid for out of a grant.
And I agree. We should, with my colleagues, we should look at those things as a part of a package. So then you look at our current scenarios that we've been faced with right now. So our current budget that we've been presented with for fiscal year twenty-four maintains the current levy rate and affers the morgue until fiscal year twenty-five. And the result is, we're in the red for the next forecasted, I mean, fiscal year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-seven, fiscal year, we're all in the red. If you take the current levy rate and you maintain that, and then you cancel the morgue, and definitely you don't just postpone it, but you cancel the morgue project, we're still in the red. We still end up in the red, long term, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. One option that we've heard is that you, this board with three votes, not, not a five vote, but if you had three supervisors that voted to increase property taxes, you could max out property taxes to 1.9581 and cancel the morgue. And even if three supervisors were to do that, correct me if I'm wrong, and take our, max out property taxes with a three-member vote, as far as they could with a three-member vote, and cancel the morgue, it's still not enough to overcome the projected deficit in the future, long term. Is that correct?
Long term, Chairman Lingefelter, a fifteen percent levy increase this year and then maintaining that levy rate.
It's not sufficient.
It is not sufficient through FY twenty-eight.
Right. So then another option that you've been, you presented us is, we maintain the current property tax rate, the levy rate of 1.7547, and cancel all of the CIP projects, which include the morgue, the mandated legal services center, the justice center, and historic courthouse. We would still, I believe the substations survive those cuts, but all of those other projects under the CIP program would be cut. That's obviously gonna please the attorneys and the courts who need that, those facilities to conduct their county business. And I think it, just my one opinion, that that takes the county back to a couple of decades ago, where this county couldn't afford buildings and, you know, necessary to conduct county business. So then the next scenario that you presented us with is you max out the levy rate with three votes to 1.9581, and you cancel all CIP minus the substations. That's kind of what we talked about. I think that's going backwards. And then the two other votes that are really unlikely, I mean, we heard hell no to a sales tax. Another vote, an option, would be if all of five of our supervisors were to say, yes, let's, let's increase property taxes, then the full board could max out the levy rate and the property taxes here on our citizens and senior citizens and small businesses to 2.3255 max levy rate and include all the CIP. And that would fix the problem, but I can tell you, I'm not gonna vote for that. And then another thing you could do is, with a five-member vote, max out the property tax rates to 2.3255 levy rate and cancel all the CIP. That gets you out of the red, but I think it takes you backwards. So then you look at where we are right now compared to all other counties. You look at the combined county property tax and excise rates of all fifteen counties. Right now, we stand at third lowest. The only, the only two counties that beat us are Navajo County and Greenlee County. We're the third lowest. And that's, that's a really good place to be. I like it. If we were to have three supervisors vote to max out the property tax that they could and take us to 1.9581 with no excise tax, then we jump from third lowest to eighth out of fifteen counties. We jump to eight, number eight. And we'd still be the only county in Arizona without an excise tax. There, all of the fourteen counties have an excise tax. We don't. If you were to go to a combined county property and excise tax rate comparison amongst the fifteen counties, where Mojave County had a quarter cent sales tax that was a hundred percent dedicated to our sheriff, to fill all deputy positions, fill our, all of our adult detention center positions, and a property tax that would then actually be able to be lowered to first 1.55 and then to 1.50, that combined rate would take us to, at 1.55, we would be fourth lowest out of the fifteen. And when it goes to 1.50, we would actually bump Maricopa County and become fourth lowest. And the only ones that would beat us would be Apache, Navajo, and Greenlee. And with regard to the sales tax, everybody that I've spoken to in my district, I mean, it's largely rural. I mean, I've got Kingman and Centennial Park. Everybody else is unincorporated. Everybody else needs county sheriff. They want law enforcement. They don't think response times are sufficient. And I think, I'm not saying that you're doing a horrible job, Sheriff. You've done an excellent job with the resources that you have. And I'd like for you to come down if you wanna say anything, because I think the fiscal year twenty-four budget, we're actually freezing an additional seven positions out of your budget. And I think that that's wrong. It goes the opposite direction that Mojave County needs. I also reached out to our assessor, and our assessor has said, because of what, Proposition 117? Was it 117? Was it 117? And recently, you know, the state legislature, they like to say they're doing a good job and, and they give renewable energy, solar, um, you know, abatements and push that, that burden on residents. And they did some stuff with primary or business property tax, personal property tax. So the burden for taxpayers that are seniors and small businesses and, um, you know, it just keeps getting more and more for property tax. And I'm a supply side economics guy. I think that you should, you should cut property taxes because those are the people that create jobs and, and provide jobs for other people that don't create jobs. Sheriff, how many positions are you freezing?
Chairman Lingenfelter, members of the board, this year we are offering 10 positions in total from the patrol side and the jail side.
And you've got how many vacancies on deputies and how many vacancies with adult detention center officers?
Currently have 20 vacancies on patrol. We have 30, I want to say 39 vacancies in our adult detention facility.
Do you know what sort of a percentage that is? I know cops can do math, but.
It, it's hard to say. If you look at our total staffing level, uh, I would say 25% on patrol, but in reality, it's probably closer to 35 because the spots we're missing are patrol spots.
Yeah.
Not command spots. So probably 35% on the street and well over 30, 35 in the jail. And this has been constant.
From a conservative standpoint, I think that's unacceptable.
100% unacceptable.
So, I mean, for my, for my, all the information that I've shared, you know, I don't like taxes at all. I want to keep us the, the lowest combined property tax rate that we can. If we had that sales tax, it was 100% dedicated to your office, to fully fund your deputies, fully fund your adult detention, detention center officers. And then we lower the property tax. And then if any three in the future, any three supervisors try to monkey and raise the property tax up again, then there would be a circuit breaker that would get rid of the sales tax. And then whoever's on the board at that time would have to figure out a new way to go with revenue and, and taxing policy. So I'm not going to vote to raise our property taxes on the people that live here, unless it's a part of a negotiated package that looks at, at what cuts we can make. There has to be some sort of a sales tax percentage. I'm not going to get into, um, a percentage. But the residents and the visitors that come to our county to enjoy the experience, they got to pay something. They got to kick in something. I think that's fair because they use your services. If they ring their $100,000 boat over here and they get in an accident and you respond, we're picking up the cost of that. I know Kingman has Placer AI. It's a cell phone pinging technology that the economic development department at the city of Kingman uses. They've done a study with ASU, actually, the Economic Institute down there, on how many of their visitors were coming from over 100 mile radius and how many lived here. Those, those, um, numbers were significantly higher, close to the Interstate 40 and US 93. Because Kingman, we don't have a lake or a river, but we have two rivers of money running through our town. We have Interstate 40 and we have US 93. So with that, I mean, I'm not going to vote to raise our property taxes and continue to over rely on our property taxes unless there's some sort of a negotiated package that looks at everything. So. Other comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Kanchi, I know you sat through the meeting. Do you want to come down and testify? Add any remarks about what affect the, the state shifting the burden to homeowners and small businesses? I mean, they've given tax breaks to renewable energy and solar and all these other things.
Chairman, board, thank you for having me. I'm very concerned. I'm looking at less and less property taxes if we kept, if we kept it at what we are now because of the tax shifts that are going to come around the, the pike. Our legislature is trying to get rid of our business personal property tax and that's just going to be squarely on a tax shift to our homeowners. I see that proposition 117 is eventually going to even everyone out. So you won't be guaranteed that 5% increase like you're expecting. So I really think that there's a lot to be said with the legislator taking, doing that tax shift, which is going to make it difficult for you in the future.
Well, it just shifts the, more of the burden to our
Absolutely.
homeowners and our small businesses.
And as assessors, we're always against that tax shift.
Yeah. If you look at our economy, over 97 or 8% of our economy is stage one and stage two, small businesses, one to 10 employees or 10 to 99 employees. And those are the folks that get hit. Those, those are the folks that actually create the majority of jobs in Mojave County, you know, and those are the people that you're hurting.
You know, I did a little bit of data research after your last meeting. And we found that the suggestion that the treasurer bring down the property taxes would be, would save us a lot of money. So depending upon what kind of home and the value of your home, if it's a $200,000 home, for example, you would save about $32 a year. $300,000 home would be about 48 and it goes up. But no matter what, it's, it's more money than what you would pay in sales tax from what I can see. But that's again, just what I've put together with sales tax, that quarter cent that you suggested. So in the long run, if we got the quarter cent and we reduce the, the tax rate like it was suggested, then it would actually cost me less taxes and most people in the county less taxes.
Thank you, Assistant Kanchi.
Any questions? Thank you.
It's a pleasure of the board. Do we want to hold, um, I mean, I'm happy to go through a, a workshop type of a deal where we go through the budget value, value engineering style and we try to cut some things. Um, I'm happy to go through that. I don't think there's $18.5 million with this stuff without completely axing the capital improvement program. I think that affects the way that the county continues to do business in the future. I think that's not a good idea, but, um, I'm only one. So what are your thoughts? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank the Bullhead City Mayor and the Assistant City Manager for pointing out the fallacy of 60%. Tourists paying the sales tax, um, because they don't make big ticket purchases. The, we, everybody that lives here spends a majority of their money in the county and that majority of that money would be affected by a sales tax. You're talking about a circuit breaker that, that's not even going to work. Because as soon as you hit that cap and somebody wants to change it around, they're going to go to court and sue and that circuit breaker will get thrown out. So I would, don't, I wouldn't put much hope in that. I don't put much hope in the, um, ability of future boards to hold the line on taxes. I just, I've been in politics for over 20 years and I don't have much faith in other politicians. Really, you need to make ongoing cuts. One-time cuts aren't going to get you out of the situation. You need to make ongoing cuts. You, you can fully fund the sheriff's department. I might go after the sheriff's $80,000 upgrade to the autopilot system in his airplane. But other than that, I'll leave, I might leave the sheriff alone. I have no, if you guys want to have a Senate style budget hearing where we propose things to be cut, I'm more than happy to do that. You can look up footage on the internet of me raising my hand time after time during the great recession to cut programs and re, uh, reallocate that money to the general fund. I'm more than happy to do that. I'm disappointed that we don't do that and that's not our standard project, our standard way of doing it anyway. But you, you can't get out of this by, um, cutting one-time spending. You need to cut continuing spending. Continuing to raise taxes is unacceptable because you take more money out of the people's pocket. They don't have any more money. They're already playing, they're already paying inflated prices for everything. It should not be government first. It should be the taxpayers first. We shouldn't make sure that government gets theirs while the taxpayers suffer. We need to suffer along with them. So if we have to suffer, I'm more than happy to suffer along with them. Thank you.
Other discussion from the board? It's a pleasure of the board. Is there interest in, in, um, what two of our members have, have mentioned in their comments, some sort of a, a budget hearing to discuss possible cuts, where those, where they think that those cuts might come from? You know, I'm happy, I'm happy to participate in that as well. I think that should be a part of it.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Director Monahan. I don't think with the deficit you have, you're going to be able to balance it with, with cuts because of the small proportion of services that aren't mandated. There's no way you can cut to save 18 and a half million dollars next year.
Chairman Lingenfelter, Supervisor Johnson, we do not believe that without, as has been mentioned, without cuts to some of the larger capital improvement projects, there's not enough in the way of recurring expenses to cut $18 million to balance next year's budget.
Right, but, but not considering taking out the buildings, which, you know, that's probably obviously going to happen. But you have ongoing expenses. You're not going to be able to cut 18 and a half million dollars out of non-mandated services.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I don't think that's a, so if you're going to have, if you want to have a meeting to make cuts, I don't, there's not, there's no cuts you can be made. I mean, you might be able to say, if you go along with some kind of, you have to have an increase in money to cover it. You could probably say, you know, we're going to have the county do a 5% cut, you know, which would be tough, but at least that would get us through. I think that with a 20, 20 cent raise, stopping all, um, future projects would get us through to what, 31?
Chairman Lingenfelter, Supervisor Johnson, a 5% across the board cut with what you're suggesting with freezing any future projects? Yes, I believe that that would get us to fiscal 31.
Right. And I think with that, not that we're look, not looking, we're looking to go to 31 with that, but that would give the breathing room to start figuring out, you know, where the board could come together next year or the year after or kiss it off till a new board's elected, one of the two.
Chairman Lingenfelter, I would just add in response to Supervisor Johnson's comment, that when you do an across the board cut, that assumes that all those services provided are equal in value. You're doing, it's, it's, you're painting with a broad brush. It's a blanket. You know, we have large departments, we have small departments. Some small departments provide very critical services. You ask them to cut 5% from their budget, there's going to be a decrease in the level of service that's provided. We've had, our county's been growing, so the demands for services have increased. We all know that costs have gone up. The quarter cent sales tax that was in place previously, that sunset at the end of 2019, it built this building, it built the jail, it built a lot of buildings. What it didn't do is pay for the ongoing maintenance costs for all of those buildings. And so when that revenue stream went away, without replacing it with an additional revenue stream, you now have these increasing costs. We can't decrease the maintenance costs for the jail. We can't decrease the maintenance costs for all of these buildings. To, to do that, to just defer the maintenance would end up costing a lot more in the long run. costs have gone up over the years. There's, in my opinion, there's no getting around the fact that costs have gone up over the years.
Mr. Chairman. Right. Supervisor Johnson.
My first three years, we cut 10% every year and we cut it straight across the board. And I understand that some people are going to get hurt worse than other people. And obviously the sheriff's department has a bigger cut because they got a bigger budget and the courts and everybody else. But, uh, you can't go in and look at each budget because obviously, uh, take the clerk of the, clerk of the board, she has a small department. We could take 5% from her, we say we're taking 5%, but if we go in and look at her budget, she probably has no 5% to give in, in reality. You know, the only place you can get is the larger one. So if you say you're going to take 5%, it was just a suggestion, you know, you, you take it from everybody and everybody feels the pain. And yes, the public will not have the services that they, they pay for, but they're getting, for the amount of money that they pay, they're getting the services that, that they want to pay for. I mean, that's just the sad reality of the whole, whole situation, you know? You can't do anything if you don't have the money, you know? And if, and if, you know, talking about that 20 cent increase, that puts us back to a buck 96 where we were just a couple of years ago. You know, it's not like we're going, you don't have to go into that $2 range. I think the 96 or something is probably the highest we've ever had it in the county. But, and that fluctuates, but that gets you through a time. But it wasn't a suggestion, it was just to explain how that goes. And like Supervisor Gould said, if a quarter cent sales tax comes in, you can't do away with it. The franchise tax board won't let you, once it's put in, you, you can't put a, say, well, if the board raises taxes because they want it for at least a minimum of 10 years. They, they're not playing that. Put it in this year and take it away next year. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. As we discuss cuts across the board, if that is what I'm hearing, I, I feel compelled to, um, remind the board that many of the contracts that we currently have that was approved just this year have automatic escalation factors in them. I would also like to remind the board that the inflation that we've experienced exceeds the maximum that the, the increase in valuation in property is. We're limited by statutes. The assessors is limited by statutes to 5%. The inflation has been higher than that. So just to, just to have an inflation adjust the tax rate, something needs to be done just to stay even with where we've been at with this inflation. We have 86% rounded. It's 85.6, allow me to round to 86 of the services that we provide are mandated services. The board hears every board meeting during the call to the public of where we fall short and where we're not providing services. I cannot envision keeping up with what we provide today, which is considered by many to be short when we are contemplating making further cuts to where we are at. We've made some gains to stop the bleeding related to employee compensation. That was the result of high vacancies experienced throughout. And our, the, the steps taken to just basically stop the bleeding and we are very grateful that the board did take steps. We continue to experience vacancies above 100 countywide when you include the courts. We have court cases that exceeds the, the judicial standards. We have that in the prosecution side. We have, we have that on the defense side. We're hearing from the court. The sheriff has made presentation to you to tell you how shorthanded he is. That is across the board in the other departments as well. So I, I, I cannot fathom how we would achieve cuts, recurring cost cuts and maintain the service that we provide. I, I have, I've, I've been, um, waiting for this discussion to take place and I'm so glad and grateful that we are having it with you, the board. I, it, it's one thing to say we will cut across the board or we'll, we'll, we will cut here and there. I think the expectations for this services are across the board. Therefore motor graders and motor grader operators to pave the roads and maintain them. Therefore, uh, you know, planning and zoning and inspection and, and therefore public health and, and the list goes on and on. My, my, my sense is, um, everything is possible. The sun will rise tomorrow, but we will, if we will, if we were to, um, make across the board cuts, we will not be able to deliver the services. And I, I'm not crying wolf. I'm being really candid with you because I hear it and I feel it every single day and I try to keep you abreast of it. We've done what we can with what we have employee wise, resource, human resource wise. Our human resources are Our human resources are stretched to the limit and many departments cannot afford to have more vacancies. I don't know how else to communicate that honestly, other than to tell you candidly, I, 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 I hope that you hear me out, don't tune me out just for, for the message that I'm delivering to you. You know, we come, we go. People come, people go. Board members are elected, board members move on. Employees come on, employees leave. We have, I think, a, we have an obligation to deliver services in this county to the best of our ability and, and I'll end with this. The expenditure limits is, is a term that is used. It was introduced in the eighties and it was, it's intended to convey the cost to do business. That's what expenditure limit is and is determined every year. For the record, we are the lowest county when it comes to expenditure limits. We are the lowest, we're halfway along that ladder when other counties are considering option to raise the ceiling on their expenditure limit. There's only so much we can do with what we have. I think there's a limit for everything and at some point I think we can burn people to the point where it becomes too much for them and they start to consider other options. So I, I didn't mean to get too serious and too candid in my comments, but I truly feel compelled to be, to be a reflection for you and to share with you what I know, what I see and what I'm concerned about. Thank you for listening to me and the opportunity for me to speak.
Thank you, Manager Elters. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe when we talked about mandated services, there was a disconnect between what I believe are mandated services and what the county believes are mandated services. And I didn't think we were bunching entire departments into the mandated services category or the not mandated services category because it was too difficult to break out the individual employees within that department, whether they were working on mandated projects or unmandated projects. So merely saying that things are mandated does not necessarily mean that that employee is working on a mandated project. So the number that you're quoting is actually higher than in what it is in reality. Because when I talk about mandated services, I talk about services that are required by the, the state statute to be provided. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. To your manager, I'll, I'll get to you. To your point, Mr. Manager, if you've watched this board over a number of, of years, this has always been a very conservative board and they have done cuts in the past, but the budget is almost, it's like a wine glass, almost like the reservoirs, right? So if you do a 5% or 10% cut up here, it's, it's not quite the impact as if you get down to here and you do a 5 or 10% cut, you got a lot less to cut, right? So, I mean, if we want to re-explore the 86% mandated, 2.7% essential, almost 12% discretionary, I don't think you're going to be able to get to the number that you need just on, on cutting out of the, primarily the discretionary stuff after you've done so many cuts in the past decades. I don't think it's possible, but I'm willing to entertain it and go through it as an economic exercise and see exactly what happens. As far as the sales tax being in place for 10 years or 20 years, it's, it's going to be 100% dedicated to sheriff's office and I hope you're not going anywhere for 10 or 20 years. So I'm kind of okay with that. Like Supervisor Gould, I don't trust politicians, I mean, what we see when it comes to tax rates, but it takes three board members to monkey around, or it would take three board members to monkey around with the property tax rate to, to kick in that circuit breaker that would make the sales tax go away. And so locally, I know the three of us that are running for reelection, I trust Supervisor Gould not to raise the property tax rate. I trust Supervisor Johnson not to raise the prior property tax rate and I trust myself not to raise the property tax rate. So, you know, if we're here, it would be stable. If we leave, then maybe we'll get some Democrats in here and it will all go to hell. I don't know, but you got a whole, whole host of other problems to deal with, with equity and stuff, but, you know, we still stay fourth or fifth out of 15. So I'll call on you after Supervisor Gould. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did a little research on an interesting anomaly. Somehow people think that sales taxes or property tax won't go up if we adopt a sales tax. But if you take a look at Lake Havasu City over the past three or four years, their sales tax revenue has just gone through the roof, but yet they adopt a tax, a property tax rate that brings them in additional revenue through property taxes each and every one of those years. It's just the nature of politicians to want to spend more money. It, it, it's almost like gravity that, so there's no guarantee that if you adopt a sales tax, that the property tax rates are going to go, going to go down or remain the same. It's, it just, it, in my experience, it has never worked out that way. Thank you.
I can't speak for the city council of Lake Havasu, but I'm a promises made, promises kept kind of guy and if I say I'm not going to raise your property taxes, I'm not going to do it. If, I'm just not going to do it. Sheriff, come on up.
Chairman, board members, not to belay this topic, I understand this has been going on for some time. I want to make a couple of points, though. I think sometimes we fail to forget that we can inadvertently dehumanize our own employees. We talk about the public and the county, all right? Well, my staff, they're county residents. They're facing the same woes that everything we've talked about today, we hear. I've got clerks making $14 and change. Let's not discount the fact that they are lumped aside from the general public. They are part of the public, they're part of our community. So I wanted to bring that point home. And I would say this, to your point, Chairman Gould, you folks are going to decide what you want to do. You make the big bucks, Gene, I always tell you that. However, yes, the city has exorbitant sales tax, they have property tax, they're doing very well. You talk to them by their own admission, they're doing very well. That's why they can afford to pay their officers and their staff these high rates that I'm competing with. So we can continue to sit down here at the bottom and claim, hey, we're the lowest tax county in the state, but I will not be able to compete with the local agencies and that's been my point all along. So I, I simply would say this to you, you have a balanced budget this year. It accommodates my needs, my recommendation, look to pass that budget and you have a year to figure out the direction the county needs to go in. That's my two cents and I appreciate your time as always.
Thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Bishop.
Actually, the sheriff just made my little speech for me. We have in front of us a balanced budget that's been studied by staff. We've discussed it over and over again. I think the majority of the board here would like to see a sales tax come back. That's not going to happen unless we get unanimous support and we have one holdout. So the sales tax is off the table. I think if we pass the tenet budget as it's presented here today, it buys us another year to figure out what we're going to do the following year. And during that year, I think we can look at taking it to the vote of the people for a small sales tax for, specifically for the sheriff's office. And if we vote to do that, it only takes the majority vote of this board of supervisors to put that to the vote of the people. So I think that would be my recommendation, take the tenet budget as it's been presented and then work on getting a sales tax for the sheriff.
Thank you, Supervisor. Is that a motion?
I will make that a, a motion. So my motion would be to adopt the 2023-24 tenet budget with modifications and set July 17th as the date for the public hearing on the final budget and tax levy and truth and taxation if applicable. And then set a special board meeting for adoption of the final budget on July 17th, followed by, following the public hearing and to ask staff to work on bringing the sheriff's sales tax back to the board and then to the voters.
Thank you for that motion.
I'll second that.
You've heard that motion second. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor, uh, Johnson, excuse me.
I think you're making a big mistake if you go ahead by adding continuing debt onto this, this budget. You're putting $4 million in new initiatives, which are going to come, come due next year and these are reoccurring fees. I know their, their employee benefits that we're already talking about, their pay scales that we might need, but we can't afford. I think that's reckless on our part to add more to it because I don't know if, if I just say we're 18 and a half million in the hole next year, how's that money going to, where are you going to get that money from if you don't address it this year? I mean, we, we've got to address it and it has to be new revenue. I mean, there has to be new revenue coming in and I don't, you know, if you want to go to the public with a quarter cent sales tax for the sheriff, that's one thing, but I think as a board, if you're putting in a sales tax, you need to have it go to the general fund so that the board decides where the money goes because from year to year, things change. When you take one stream of money and, and put it into one department, I think you're making a mistake. That, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So I agree with that, but I don't think the voters will support this quarter cent sales tax if it's not going specifically to public safety. I don't, I don't think the support would be there for it to put it in the general fund because there's mistrust of, of us using those funds appropriately. But if you can't trust your sheriff, we're in trouble.
You know, to Supervisor Bishop's point, I go up onto the strip and, you know, we're, we're pretty light on county services up there as it is. I mean, we don't have Monday through Friday office hours up there in a lot of different places. I hear about law enforcement, they, they, they want a good relationship with the sheriff's office, they want deputies, so I support your motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 64, if I could get Director Walsh to come down really quick. My place is on the agenda, requesting that this board approve Board of Supervisors resolution against another administrative rule from BLM called Conservation Landscape Health. Can you just give an overview of this and basically what they're trying to do?
Chairman Linganfeltzer, members of the board, can't decide if I want to keep these glasses on or off. This item is, so BLM has, has proposed a new rule, it's called Conservation and Landscape Health. And what this rule allows is to, for, for entities to be able to apply for a conservation use for BLM lands. The problem is, is that this, this use would basically preclude any conflicting uses on that same land, ultimately turning that, that BLM land into a one-use property, which is contrary to, to their, 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 their own directives and their own, find it, their own, their own authorities. So basically the, the letter that we've worked with Chairman Linganfeltzer on is basically expressing our objection to this rule and requesting that, that it not be enacted. Arizona, or Mojave County has, 71% of our land is owned by the federal government. So this rule going into, to effect could ultimately affect a good chunk of Mojave Counties.
Thank you, Tim. Basically, this is just the Biden administration continuing to practice their federal overreach. This tool would allow these really radical environmental groups to come in and basically lease land under the guise of, of conservation. It would harm ranching communities, it would, you know, our longstanding ranchers, I mean, I included in the backup documentation, a letter from the Big Sandy Natural Resource Conservation Area, a lot of ranchers on there, they're absolutely opposed to this. And it's not a true definition of, of use of our public lands. I mean, they, they're just looking for a tool for these, these environmental groups to come in and shut off people from public lands. It's all it is and, and it's wrong. So any other comments? I'd make a motion to approve item number 64.
Second.
You've heard that motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We are adjourned.